Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Hubble. I'm, I gotta get used to doing this again. The meeting of the Planning Commission for November the 9th, 2022 is now in session. Good evening. This is a special Hybrid Planning Commission meeting. It's the first time in two and a half years that we've been here in person, which is great for some of us. Again, my name is Daniel Hubble. I am tonight's Chair for this hybrid session. Welcome Carolyn. We are being brought to you in person and by Zoom. We have members of the Commission and members of the staff that will be joining us virtually. As we are all getting settled, please be patient with me this evening to make sure that I can see everybody. I've got people here and people on the screen, so I'm gonna do my best to keep track of everything. Our first order will be to call the roll. So Commissioners who are online and for those who are not familiar with the DAS, the microphones in front of you, there's a button that you'll need to push to make sure the green light has been turned on so that you can be heard remotely. And with that, Deputy City Clerk Deb, would you mind, please, calling the roll?
Present.
I think I heard Commissioner Curry present.
Thank you. Commissioner Accused?
Present.
Commissioner Rishis?
Here.
Commissioner Reggib?
Present.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Present.
And Chair Hubble?
I am present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, our first item on the agenda this evening will be appearances, if that is correct. Public appearances at this time, this is the time that we have set aside for members of the public to speak to the Commission about issues of concern. If you wish to speak, please consider the following points. Speak audibly into your microphone. Please state your name and city of residence for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. I know we have one member of the public here this evening. Are you planning, Matt, to speak?
I'm here to listen.
You're here to listen. Thank you. Deputy City Clerk, do we have anyone online prepared to speak this evening?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, hearing that there are no public appearances this evening, we will move to regular business. The first item on that agenda will be to approve the minutes of October the 26th, our regular meeting from two weeks ago. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
It has been moved by Commissioner Rishis. And is there a second? Second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Reggib. Got the second on that. Are there any comments, questions, or corrections to the minutes?
Yes, I do have some, some comments, Dan.
Sure.
I would like to recommend that we, I mean, I'll tell you what this is about and then I can put it into a motion if you like. All of our actions are stated to have moved amendments forward to the final docket or the proposed final docket. And I would think that it would be better if we, more accurate if we said that we are recommending amendments to the City Council for inclusion. Again, if you look at the City Code regarding this matter, if maybe staff could get that up on the screen, I would appreciate it. It's 1915230D1C, if that's possible.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm not prepared to bring up the code at this moment.
No problem. I'll just explain then. The only thing that the code says that the Planning Commission does, I wish I had this actually as a quote that I could read to you, but it's pretty clear. I can tell you almost exactly what it says. It just says that the Planning Commission would recommend to the Council after their review of the preliminary docket. It's just one sentence as far as what we do. It doesn't really prescribe any criteria. We don't actually move things to the final docket. So, so at this point, I would just make a, a motion. If that's right, yes.
But if I might recommend, because I understand exactly what you're saying, I hope, which might be for each of these motions, it says move forward the proposed final docket, but rather move forward to the recommended final docket rather than proposed?
No, I have, I have some different wording which I would, I would propose.
Okay, I thought, I thought I'd heard you said that you didn't have any specific wording. That's why I was suggesting.
I have specific wording, but we don't have the City Code on the screen so that you can read it. So that was my only, you know.
Okay.
Okay, so.
If you'd like to make your motion with your proposed language, that would be great.
Okay. I move that we change the language of all of the amendments to recommend amendment number to the City Council for inclusion in the final docket.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any commentary from? Anyone?
Sure. After our meeting, because I was confused by this process, I viewed several other cities' processes for docketing. And in several of them, including Seattle, Issaquah, and a couple of others, they do have the Planning Commission use the exact same criteria as the City Council. And so, and the language is pretty clear that they are creating a draft final docket for council consideration. This might need more discussion by the council, but I'm concerned that we didn't maybe follow procedure last time. And I was gonna, wanted to add, I don't know if I proposed a different motion or when we're, I wanted to amend the minutes with my comment to that extent.
Sure, let's get this, since we have a motion on the floor, we'll resolve that motion and then we can come back if, if you don't feel that it's been adequately addressed through that. Okay. Mike or Jeremy, do you have any additional comments or thoughts on the proposed change? Okay, hearing none online. Did you have one more thing you wanted to add, Carolyn?
Yeah, yes, I did. It occurred to me that I do have a copy of the City Code in my folder here, so I can read to you what it says. So this is Mercer Island City Code 19 dot 15 dot 230D1C. And this is the instruction to the Planning Commission as to what we will do with preliminary docket. The Planning Commission shall review the preliminary docket at a public meeting and make a recommendation on the preliminary docket to the City Council each year. So that's our instruction. The very next point, which is D, the City Council shall review the preliminary docket at a public meeting. And by December 31st, the City Council shall establish the final docket based on the criteria in subsection E of this section. So, you know, I, I don't have any comment about what other cities are doing, but I think that my comments about the wording of our recommendations kind of are, I think we're staying in our, you know, wheelhouse to make it clear that we're making a recommendation for the, the docket rather than moving amendments forward. So I'm just basing this on Mercer Island City Code only.
Great. So with that, this is semantics. I don't think it changes any of the outcome of what we had at the meeting, so anybody who, Deb, would you like to, do we need to do a roll call because of the folks online? Is that the easiest?
Yes, Chair.
So with that, we have a motion to change the, the language as was iterated by Carolyn Boatsman. Do you need her to re, to restate that?
If you'd like, I can restate it based on what I've recorded on my end.
Yes, that would be great.
The motion was to change the language of all amendments to quote unquote, recommend amendment number for inclusion in the final docket.
I put it just a little bit different, if I may add. Recommend amendment number, whatever number that is, to the City Council for inclusion in the final docket.
Okay, I've added that adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's, unless there's no other comments, we'll just call a vote to that change?
For the Record Chair, because we do have a second, I need Commissioner Reggib to agree to the change to the amendment for the language.
I, I agree with Commissioner Boatsman's revision to the language. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Ready for the roll? All right.
Please.
Commissioner Boatsman? Aye. Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Commissioner Accused?
No.
Commissioner Rishis?
Aye.
Commissioner Reggib?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Excuse me, Vice Chair Murphy and Chair Hubble?
Aye. Okay. That change moves forward six to one. Thank you, everyone. Commissioner Accused, you have additional comments?
Yeah, I would just like to add, I wanted to document that Commissioner Accused proposed that lacking other criteria, the evaluation criteria should be used. And that would come in the minutes after Commissioner Boatsman's statement.
My apologies, Commissioner. Just one moment, I'll shift over to the minutes. And where exactly are you looking in the minutes?
It's on this topic.
Which page?
Well, I have my own minutes. It's on item two. And after the second sentence, Commissioner Boatsman expressed concerns regarding the docket process. If you could add after that sentence, Commissioner Accused proposed that lacking specific criteria, the City Council evaluation criteria should be used by the Planning Commission.
I can do that, Commissioner. If I can speak to the Commission as your Deputy City Clerk, I just want to, when we do minutes at the City of Mercer Island, we capture the action of the full Commission and not individual statements. In this case, the only reason why Commissioner Boatsman's item or comment paraphrased was included was because it was the, or the Commission agreed that they wanted to bring it back for further consideration. So I'm, I'm not pushing back on what you're saying. I'm just simply trying to share with the Commission our process for managing minutes on our end. If this, if there's a desire by the full Commission to add that in, happy to make that happen. I just need a motion to make that, put that in there.
I guess it's relevant to an item later on the agenda, so I can skip it and just get through the minutes.
All right, so you'll bring it up later? Okay. So with that, any other comments or additions to the minutes, Commissioner Curry?
I was just, I'm kinda confused as to what we're trying to do here, but if it's gonna be brought up later on, then I'll, I'll hold off and wait until that time.
Yeah, my, my apologies. The I, it is, the, what the Deputy City Clerk has reminded me is that we haven't, we, I, I was here when we went through the whole process of, of actually defining what minutes were, what were captured in the minutes and how that was done. And so that hasn't been, I think, relayed to the entire group, so.
That's my hesitation.
Yeah, no, I, I, exactly. And that highlighted to me, like, oh, okay, like, yes, good comment, and we don't do a transcript minute, so. In any case, we've worked through that. So Commissioner Curry, thank you for asking for clarity on that. Mostly what I'm looking for when I ask this question are to the point of Commissioner Boatsman to either clarify language that has been used that would affect intent of any actions that we took and/or any clerical errors that might need to be revised and updated. Okay, with that, I don't see any other hands or questions related to the minutes. So if we could, please call a quick roll of approval of the minutes.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair.
As, as amended.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boatsman? Aye. Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Commissioner Accused?
Aye.
Commissioner Rishis?
Aye.
Commissioner Reggib?
Aye.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Aye.
And Chair Hubble?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, that brings us to our third item of, our second item of business this evening, which is the third draft of the transportation element as a part of the comprehensive plan update. This evening, our goal is to provide additional comments on the third draft that will eventually come back to us at a time, I'm sure that Adam will be presenting to us for public, is it a public hearing? Is that the next phase? I'm sure you'll go through all of that. But this evening, Adam will walk us through, but again, we're just providing comments on the third draft of the transportation element. It looks like, Adam, are you leading us through this this evening?
Well, I have a, a couple of slides I wanted to go through before we brought on our consultant, Michael, to go through the transportation element. I just wanted to give you guys a quick recap of where we've been and, and hopefully some clarity about where we're going with this process. So just a moment here, will you share my screen? So again, this is just a quick recap of the transportation and land use elements and how, how we got to these third drafts tonight. I think this will be helpful background information. So our purpose tonight, as the Chair put it, is to complete this round of review for both the transportation and the land use elements. So we're hoping to get this, put a bow on this, this evening. Looking at our process, we started with project scoping and getting some initial public input on the comprehensive plan update. This included, you know, the scoping process that we went through in the late winter, and then also some public surveys that we conducted early in the summer. Where we're at now is preparing public review drafts of the elements. Specifically tonight, we'll be looking at transportation and land use. But it's important to note that there's, there are several steps after this before we kind of wrap up the overall comprehensive plan update. So again, we're here at the second of kind of, of these six kind of overarching steps in the process. So some background on both of these elements. So the first draft of the transportation and the land use element were both brought forward to the Planning Commission, and you were briefed on July 27th. Then that's, that initiated a comment period on both draft elements that went from July 27th to August 31st. And then the second draft and those, that comment period where we got comments from the Planning Commission and a few public comments, those fed into that second draft that the Planning Commission considered on September 28th. At that meeting on the 28th, we went through all of those comments and the proposed amendments. And the Planning Commission responded to and resolved most of those proposed edits or the, the public comments on those drafts. Each of the, each of the elements, so the transportation and the land use element, both had a couple, a handful of unresolved topics that, you know, it was either the Planning Commission had asked us to, had, had asked staff to redraft or amend some of the language and bring back another draft for you to consider at this meeting. And so tonight, we're really gonna be focusing on those, those handful of unresolved topics from the 28th, the, the meeting on September 28th. So our process for tonight is we're, staff will walk you through each of those unresolved topics that were outlined in the staff memo. And then well, you know, the Planning Commission can then provide comments on those unresolved topics. And then we're asking for a decision on, to resolve each of those topics. And the decision points are spelled out in the memo, so you can kind of see, you know, there's, most of them have a, you know, have three different options of how you can resolve this, and we're really looking for that direction tonight. And then once we've resolved these topics, the, the intent is to conclude this round of review for both the transportation and the land use element. And then that initiates the, or that'll move us to having public review drafts prepared for each of these elements. And the public review drafts will feed into the next step in the comprehensive plan update process, wherein we'll be collecting public input on the draft elements, the overall comprehensive plan update. So the, the public will then have a chance to review these drafts that we're preparing in these meetings and then make some comments on them. And then the Planning Commission, you will have the option to take another look at these elements once we've gathered that public input before you ultimately make a recommendation. And there's a couple of points at which we will be, or you will be able to respond to the, the public input. So looking ahead at our process, we're gonna continue working on draft elements through the next year. So we'll, we'll repeat the same process for our capital facilities, utilities elements, economic development element, the other, the other pieces of the comp plan. Working towards getting a public review draft for each of those elements. Then following that is our public participation phase of the project. That'll include an economic development element workshop, because that's a new element of the comprehensive plan. We're gonna hold a specific workshop to get feedback on that element. And then we're also planning to hold a comprehensive plan update open house where the public can see what the, what the amendments are to the, the comprehensive plan and provide comments at that time. Following the public participation process, that will be where you wrap up your part of the process. So we'll have a, a tune-up meeting where, you know, you will be able to respond to those comments and, and make any slight changes that, that may be required do, you know, to respond to those comments. And then you'll also hold, hold a public hearing and work on your recommendation. So the public hearing is a formalized process where the public can come and speak directly to the Planning Commission. And then before you make your recommendation to the City Council, you can go through and respond to those comments as well. So there's a couple of different touches before your process wraps up. And we're expecting that public hearing and recommendation to be taking place sometime in early to mid 2024. So we've got about a year, year and a half left in these, the, this process for you guys. So let's see here. I already went through that. So before I turn it over to our consultant, Michael, to talk about the transportation element, do, do, does anyone have any questions about that overall process when I just outlined?
Any questions from the group? Okay.
Yeah, I have one question. I see that the economic development piece is there, but not the housing element. So I'm wondering if that's implied in the comp plan open house? Or if that process is just so uncertain at this point, we don't know where it's gonna land?
A little from both. So I think as, as initially envisioned, the, that comp plan open house would include the housing element, because it's, it's looking at the overall comprehensive plan update. If you saw the briefing for the Council last week, where we talked about some of the changes that are coming to our housing element and some of the changes to the Growth Management Act requirements for housing, that, that process may end up being amended because there's some additional, additional changes that the legislature made to the requirements for the housing element. And we need to address those during this comp plan update. So we, there's more to come, and we'll plan on coming back to the Planning Commission with a, a look, a, a check-in on the scope probably early next year. Once we, once we have all the documents from the State Department of Commerce and, and from the county. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts there. So I guess stay tuned for housing, because that's a big, that's a big one, yeah.
We should just put that on a banner in downtown, like, stay tuned. Hang on for housing. Great. Any other questions before we go to our consultant, Michael? And for both Jeremy and Mike online, I can see really well, if you use your electronic yellow hand, it actually shows up really well for me. So if you do have questions, please try to use that, because it'll help stand out if you have any comments. Okay, hearing none. Adam, let's go ahead and move forward. Michael, welcome.
Thank you. Just to let you know, I had a little network connectivity there, so hopefully everything's okay. Please let me know if it's not. Adam, thanks for the introduction. Yeah, appreciate all the input also that got us to this point. We've just got six outstanding issues that we didn't resolve at the last meeting. They're all in the goals and policy section. So what I'm gonna do is use the, the memo is kind of informal presentation tonight, so I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Let's see, yeah, so we got, the first one we got here is very straightforward. We heard from you all that the policy 2.3 wasn't appropriate to include the word maintenance in this policy. So what we did is.
Sorry, real quick, I just, for those that are following along on your
Yeah.
paper packets, this is page two of five or the, the grade box, page seven. So on the, the number on the left is seven and the number on the right is two of five.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, again, we're gonna just use the memo here, like I said, as an informal presentation, starting here with policy 2.3. We heard, there's a, the intro is actually, is not correct, so maybe just ignore this section here. But basically, what we heard on this one was, and I'll give you a little more background. So this is encouraged partnerships with nonprofit providers and the private sector in the provision and operation of the transportation system. What this is getting at is, for example, Hope Link is a nonprofit organization that provides transit and other transportation services, or it could be getting at the city possibly partnering with a ride-share program or a bike-share program. And all, the only change that we heard from you, we think it's appropriate, is just taking the word maintenance out of this one. So a pretty small, minor change to just to take out the word maintenance. Maybe the way we'll do this is, I'll just kind of give background on each of these six policies that we're changing tonight or, and just we open it up to you to, to make the decision. So we're recommending just taking out the word maintenance and simplifying the policy to, we'd encourage partnerships with nonprofit providers and the private sector in the provision and operation of the transportation system.
Okay. And Adam or Michael, if you could just clarify, we're not, you don't need a formal vote, but you just need consensus that one of the, which one of these directions you want us to move in, either to accept the recommended change or whether there's a different change?
This, this is Adam. Yeah, consensus would be appropriate. And then yeah, as long as that's reflected in the minutes, because yeah, we, we need consensus on each of these.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if you need formal motions, since this is just a, a draft discussion. Typically, we, we wouldn't do that, but okay. So, Michael, did you want us to give, have discussion and clarity on each one of these one by one, or did you want to go through all six and then, and then go back to them?
I think it's best to go one at a time while it's, you know, fresh in everybody's mind, and some of these might just be a simple, yes, it looks appropriate, but other ones might have some more discussion around them. So I think it's best to go one at a time.
Great. So that was pretty straightforward. Are there any questions, comments, or direction that? Great. So um, that was pretty straightforward. Are there any questions, comments, or direction that folks want to yield to? Um, uh, the staff, Victor?
So I have a question. So on this one, you say we're just simply removing the word maintenance, but you're actually, you actually rewrote the sentence. So can you just explain why we didn't just remove the word maintenance?
Uh, let's see. Well, okay, we, yeah, there's a little bit more, but it's um, why didn't we do that? We also heard from you to maybe soften it a little bit. Um, that pursue opportunities we have changed to encourage. Um, you know, other than that, it's very similar uh, to what we've come up with now. So that, yeah, the two things we heard from you was maintenance didn't seem appropriate, and to maybe soften, pursue to just soften it a little bit. So we went with encourage.
And and then why are we also added nonprofit providers? Why are we adding that in, in addition to private sector participation?
Yeah, so that's, okay. Pulling up the, I got my other screen to say, no, I've got uh, the full document here. I'm just looking at the context on that. Yeah, so we did have, so there's a few, this is a few rounds. So what we've got here for existing policy is what the one that's in the current draft. In the one that we sent to you before, the revised version already had nonprofit providers in there. So um, it looks like more of a change. So this has gone in a few iterations is um, so since what we sent to you last time, I can read it before. Um, we really just took out maintenance is.
So the, the existing policy is what is in the current, currently adopted. Um, uh, comprehensive plan document. The draft had a revision that looked very similar to the current staff proposed alternative. And the notes that you had from our previous discussion were um, related to removing maintenance, which is why that's the, the the revision that's coming back. So it's almost like we should have seen the strike through from the previous version you sent us rather than the existing policy in the code. Um, because I think that that's where it's Adam.
We we can see that on page uh, gray box fourteen in the packet. I was, I was, yeah, I was looking at that to see what's the original.
Oh, good. There's the strike.
That, that makes sense. And I apologize, I've gone out once or twice here, so hopefully that won't happen again. Um, but Adam, if it does happen again, um, would you want to take over, walk them through this?
So in looking at um, page, a gray box fourteen, my understanding is the green is what was presented to us last time, and the purple are the changes that have been uh, proposed this um, for this go-round.
Yes, that is correct.
Does that make, did that answer your question, Victor?
Yes, did you have a question?
Thanks.
Just a comment. Um, thanks, Victor, for catching those two changes that um, it answers a question that I had in my mind, which was that I had thought I'd seen a different version of this prior. So thank you. Um, I think that with the change that has been made, it it's much improved uh, with the two, two rounds of changes. So I I I favor what the staff is proposing here.
Okay. Um, any other uh, questions or thoughts on this before I sort of get a show of thumbs on whether you're okay with the staff change, Adam?
Um, yeah, I I like this staff proposed alternative, looking at the the CPP, which is guiding these changes. It's very close in in the words, like they use the word encourage and partnership. So I I I like this better than um, the the previous red lines.
Great. Commissioner Curry or uh, Vice Chair Murphy, do you have any uh, thoughts or comments? Okay, uh, so hearing none and for, for the two of you online, if you just want to hit your yellow button for a thumbs up, I can record that. But um, if I can get a thumbs up from everyone who's okay with the recommended staff change for this item. I've got five here. And I've got Mike and perfect. Thank you. Uh, that is uh, concurrent. We have seven. I don't know if we lost Michael or
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, great. Okay, so we have consensus on uh, item one.
Okay, great. That moves forward to uh, policy three point one. Uh, this one, what we were trying to do, the little background on this one, is we were looking at revising an existing policy to pick up um, some language in the countywide policies. So we came uh, to you last time uh, with this basically as alternative to here. And we heard some uh, proposal to maybe take out for all communities. And so we're coming back to you with three options. Um, and the only difference is the highlighted yellow section. So the alternative one is uh, most abbreviated, does not include for all communities at the end. Alternative two does include for all communities. And then the alternative three gets at the full content of what's in the countywide policy. It's the ending statement would be for all communities, especially those that have been disproportionately affected by transportation decisions. Um, so we think any one of these three would be fine uh, to go forward with. I just wanted to get your input on uh, which one you prefer.
Okay, I see Commissioner Akus turned on her microphone. So any uh, anyone want to start with their preferred alternative? Kate?
Sure, um, my preferred one is alternative three. Um, but I wanted to note as well that alternative one on page fourteen, gray box fourteen, has all communities and alternative one in the meeting packet does not have all communities. So I want to make sure that we know which one we're voting on. Um, so I would just propose that we use the agenda packet from this meeting. Does that work for?
Yeah, it looks like they're just out of order and we're labeled backwards. Yeah.
Yeah, so just want to make sure folks knew what they're
Yes, so we'll, we'll go by the staff memo, alternate one, two, and three, which is page gray box seven.
And so my preference for alternative three is because it's just consistent with how we're updating the housing element with that lens of equity.
Okay. Adam?
Um, I, and I think I was the one who originally suggested what became alternative one. Um, and I think after discussing it in with our commission last meeting, I kind of pulled that back and uh, I would, yeah, I would vote for alternative two, I think. Well, alternative three talk, you know, expands upon what they mentioned in the King County. Um, CPPs, uh, I think, you know, it's like, wh- where is this disproportionate effect? You know, who perceives it? I think that it's getting a little too much into the minutia, so I I would prefer alternative two.
Okay. Carolyn, Victor, do you have any additional?
I agree with Adam.
Okay.
I prefer alternative two as well. Um, I, I think it just kind of tells us what to do in the future in a very consistent way. So I prefer that.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Curry or Vice Chair Murphy, do either of you have any additional comments you'd like to add? Okay. Seeing none there, I am hearing consensus, Kate, around uh, option number two. Is that? Okay, I'm going to call for a show of hands, but
I I can live with option two.
All right. So um, if I can just get a quick show of hands around option two, I know folks have already said that, but um, I have five here and then online I see two as well. So we have consensus around alternative two, Michael, uh, which is just the addition of for all communities.
Okay, that's great. So related to uh, this one, I would pan forward here to page three of the packet, uh, moving on. What we heard last meeting was interest in um, a broader uh, equity um, policy. And I just wanted to call out that we do have two uh, focused equity policies, four point eight and four point nine. Uh, these are very, these are basically the countywide planning policies in here. And so these are already in there before, these two. But what we could do to address the comment was we wouldn't be, these wouldn't be appropriate to move to goal number one, because that's getting at different content. Um, what we could do, if we wanted to have a more, these broader equity uh, policies happen sooner, is that we could make goal four, goal one, and just slide it all up. There's not really a ranking order. Goal one's not intended to be more important than any of the other goals. Um, but just to give you, just offer that up there, if people were interested in having these equity uh, policies happen sooner, which is what we heard from at least one person, uh, we could make that change. There's no change to the actual four point eight and four point nine. Those are exactly what you saw last time. It's more, do we want to move them up based on a comment we heard last time?
Okay, so to restate the two uh, or the option here, if I look at the correct thing would basically be to um, renumber, uh, what is this? Uh, goal number four uh, to goal number one in the um, in the section two under transportation goals and policies. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Um, thoughts on the renumbering, just to move that forward in the document? This would be taking goal four, which starts on gray box fourteen and goes to fifteen.
Come up to the front instead of like the existing one there that's goal one now.
Yeah, so this is goal four. This big picture goal four is provide transportation choices for travelers uh, through the provision of a complete range of transportation facilities and services. So that goal would slide up. Right now, the current goal one is encourage the most efficient use of the transportation system through effective management of transportation demand and the transportation system. Just at a high level, goal one does seem to be kind of start off nice and broad as a reader. Um, and kind of, and goal four is a little more detailed. Um, so big picture wise, I think they're, they're laying it out pretty well, the way it is now, kind of starting big picture and kind of getting into more of the details. Um, but I'll leave that up, up to you all to decide.
Okay, Commissioner Akus?
Um, is there an option to just move four point eight and four point nine into goal one? I think that was the point of the comment previously, because I I can see why. I think it makes sense that it's laid out the way it is presently. But the idea behind the comment was just to bring forward those equity topics, since they're global and not restricted to choice. Which it seems that goal four is about choice and everything in it is about choice.
Yeah. Um, Michael, can you uh, sorry, Karen, I just had one question. Can you remind us? Um, four point eight and four point nine, I think, came from the countywide policy, correct? Was there a reason that they were put here? Is that, was there some consistency to the the county policy? Or is it just that's where staff thought that was the most appropriate place?
Yeah, we thought this was the most appropriate place. I mean, you can see some, like, for example, four point nine, uh, address the needs of of people who do not drive either by choice or by circumstance. So that's really getting at um, what we think the tentative goal for, what what goal for is, looking forward, um, which is more kind of transportation options. Let me re- pull that up here again. Yeah, so go forward. Again, just a reminder is provide transportation choices for travelers through the provision of a complete range of transportation facilities and services. So we just, that was our assessment, that that would be the best uh, most appropriate spot for these two.
Okay, Carolyn?
It seems that policy four point nine is somewhat of a, a subset or of four point eight, or it's a more, some more specific um, policy. But four point eight, I do think is a rather global policy, and it seems rather odd to me to see it here. I I agree with Kate that it would be more appropriate to have something like that right at the very beginning, goal one, if possible, if we can, if it, if it fits in.
So is the suggestion uh, possibly just to move four point eight into goal number one and leave four point nine in goal four?
I'm, I'm thinking that, yeah. It it's a little hard to sort of, you know, see all of this right here, sitting right now and have this idea and and um, know if it, if it works, but that's what occurs to me. Maybe, maybe our consultant can give us a, a thought about that.
I think that would be appropriate.
Um, Adam?
I, I disagree. Um, I think this, the city's original location of the additions of four point eight and four point nine um, are appropriate. I mean, these are, it's talking about generally, you know, providing perhaps reduced, reduced fares or something for people. Or, you know, more, you know, transportation options like uh, accessible buses. I do not see how that ties into efficient use of the transportation system, nor receiving maximum value. I think that ties into offering a complete range of transportation services. Um, you know, services and programs, I think. I I I, I agree with the city's original location of it under goal four.
Okay, um, Commissioner Curry or Commissioner Murphy, either of you have any comments?
I, I agree with Adam in the way it's currently proposed by the staff.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Adam on that. Um, and more importantly, I I'm not sure it really makes any difference, because all these things are weighted equally uh, under DMA. So, um, it, I, I think it, it it almost stands alone, but it's not worth having its own, probably not appropriate to have its own goal.
Okay, thank you. Kate, did you have any other thoughts you wanted to?
Yeah, I think it's, it's in the plan regardless, so that's good. Um, the reason that I thought it belonged in gold one had to do with how do you define transportation demand? And so I think having ADA issues upfront, when you're thinking about what is the demand, because I think it's different for different socioeconomic groups and people of different abilities. So that's, you know. But you could look at it either way. If it's in, it's in, I'm happy. Um, but that was just my preference to move it up to one. So that we're assessing demand, looking through a disability and equity lens.
All right, um, I think it does, I mean, given that question, just looking through this, I mean, there isn't a sort of an equity, you know, goal four kind of gets to the choice question, but there really isn't um, a broader equity um, goal in here. Um, I'm hearing at least from three people that, leaving it where it is, um, it would be the preference. So um, I'll start there and just say, do I have a consensus of at least four to leave it um, as is in uh, goal number four, leave items four point eight and four point nine as is in goal four? Do I have consensus thumbs? One, two, I have the two online, I've got Adam. Okay. All right, so we have consensus on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving along, um, we heard, going back to policy three point three, uh, we heard a comment about adding um, some language to encourage programs that plant trees in unused portions of the public right of way. Um, so we've come back to you with uh, two, two options. And how we incorporated that comment is we put it at the end of the existing three point three. So now it's followed, follows behind construct transportation improvements with sensitivity to existing trees and vegetation. And then we'd add on encourage programs that plant trees in unused portions of the public's right of way. Um, big picture, um, you know, we don't recommend um, adding this. It's, it's getting outside uh, the scope of work Big picture, you know, we don't recommend adding this, it's, it's getting outside the scope of work for updating the transportation element. It's, this has been intended to take on amendments required by the GMA, you know, recent changes in the city, transportation or the countywide planning policies. And it also may need to be a little more vetted by the transportation engineering and maintenance departments. But I just thrown out a couple of thoughts there and I'll open it up to the group.
Okay, so on gray box fourteen in the line out, item three point three, the purple section is what was brought forward based on commentary, the staff does not recommend its inclusion. Any comments from the group?
Adam? I, I still like the proposed alternative. And I think encourage programs is a low enough bar that we're not saddling ourselves with you know, detailed processes and procedures and overhead to do this. I think encourage could just be respond to people's emails if they want to plant a tree. So I'm, I'm in favor of the alternative. One other thing I had, on a separate note, I had proposed some an alternate, other additional alternates to four point eight. Should I, should we come back to those? I know we've decided on the location. Is that something to do later?
Uh, yeah, let's go through what staff has prepared and then we can come back to any of those.
So yay for alternative.
One comment to Adam's point. We kind of skipped half of the, half of the last one, because we discussed location, we didn't discuss wording. And the topic actually is discussing the wording and then discussing the location. If you look at that top paragraph and then also on the decision point.
Ah, you are correct.
Yeah, just to confirm though, we never heard, I mean, we can definitely, any change you guys want to make tonight is totally fine. We never heard any comment on the language of four point eight or four point nine. It was more just to bring it to your attention with regard to wanting to have a equity policy up, up earlier. But again, we can definitely make any changes these if you want.
Yeah, let's close out the one that we just started on the trees and then we'll go back to that. Because it sounds like there's at least two people that have comments on four point eight on the language. Okay, so getting back to three point three related to the trees in the public right of way. Any other thoughts, Carolyn?
I, I like what the staff has proposed here as alternative language and it, it is kind of opens the door, but it's very benign and it just allows for options to develop as they, as they come forward. I think in regards to the appropriateness of, of this in our current project here, we are amending policy three point one, which has to do with health and environmental impacts. And, you know, we have a, a huge health and environmental impact going on now with just simple heat. Heat at night in particular. And trees along the pavement are just remarkable at changing that calculus. And so it's something we should be open to. I think.
Okay. Commissioner Curry or Vice Chair Murphy, any comments from you? Okay, seeing no yellow hands. Kate, any additional commentary? So I have at least a couple of people that are in favor of retaining the proposed alternate as it's been presented. Do I have consensus on that? Show of thumbs for those in favor. I have two online, I have Carolyn, I have Adam, so I have four. So that's, oh, sorry, Kate, she was late. You turned my head, you gotta do it before, before I look over there. So I've got five. Four is all I need, so we've got consensus there. We'll move that forward to the public draft.
Okay, thank you.
And then, okay, so I apologize, Michael, let's go back to the prior one around policy four point eight. It sounds like there's at least two people that have comments around language change. Adam, you started, would you like to?
Sure, I, I can read the, the email, I think that was sent by, by city to all of us earlier this afternoon. I'll, I'll read the first text, because I think that's the, the least changes. My proposed revision to four point eight would read implement transportation programs and projects that address the needs of and promote access to opportunity for all communities. People with lower no incomes and people with special transportation needs while preventing and mitigating displacement of these groups. Rationale is this would make it more consistent with goal three point one, which also references all communities. And this is not excluding other groups from the city's consideration. So I think by, you know, while this differs from the King County CPPs, I think this actually overachieves there. It's more inclusive than what I read in the King County CPPs for this, which is what the proposed text in the packet is based on. And then those, you know, a quote from the CPPs is, you know, the twenty twenty one countywide planning policies were designed to provide guidance. My emphasis in advance of the twenty twenty four statutory update of comprehensive plans to incorporate changes to the regional policy framework. So we don't need to copy them word for word. I think this is one where we ought to overachieve and be more inclusive.
Okay, I know Victor was next and then Kate, did you have something Victor?
I didn't have a comment. Can you just repeat the change? Because I, I'm not looking at it, so.
I, I can.
What is the specific change?
Um, so I think where we say, address the needs of and promote access to opportunity, scratch everything beginning with four through the word color and replace with for all communities.
Got it, thank you. Kate? That's right, that was a good enough, simple explanation.
So what that does effectively is it removes the specifics of black and indigenous. And I can tell you from what I have learned through equity training and reading books about laws in Seattle and other places is that those two groups are specifically called out because black people have been historically excluded from housing to a much larger extent than other races. Black and white is a racial construct, it is an invented construct, and it has been used to suppress people systemically. I think it's important to leave these in indigenous people as well. Were not allowed to sleep in the city of Seattle. They had to sleep out on an island made of trash. So I think the reason that the county is leading with race and the reason they want to use the words black and indigenous is because these two groups specifically were excluded to a very harsh point that's affected their ability to gain wealth relative to white people. I'm very much opposed to changing the language. I think it whitewashes history. And I would prefer that we keep it as is.
Okay, Carolyn?
I think Kate makes some very good points. I, I understand that the language that the staff has provided is what is in the countywide planning policies. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think I would prefer to stay on that bandwagon and point out these particular groups that somehow when you, you know, in our, in our history, when we have referred to everybody as being welcome to the benefits of our community, it hasn't really meant everybody. So I, I, I like spelling it out and, and if that's what they're leading us to do now, I think we ought to just go, go ahead and, and do that. I don't, I don't think there's any harm in doing it and there's some benefit, I think.
Commissioner Curry or Vice Chair Murphy, do you have any comments?
I've got a couple of thoughts. I believe Kate is, is correct in the historical context. What we're talking about here is transportation planning and actions that have historically impacted different communities in our country, especially black and other, other people, other groups, other people of color. And, and that has been historically a real problem, systemic problem and has impacted those communities. As a practical matter, it's not really an issue for us because we don't have areas where, where blacks or Hispanics or indigenous peoples are located who could be impacted by transportation planning that, that affects them in adverse ways, whether it's pollution or destroying communities, close knit communities. However, even though we don't face a real problem of that regard on Mercer Island, I think it would be a mistake to excise this language because it sends, I think, the wrong message about the kind of community we are. And while I, I agree with Adam that it would be nice to be able to say that we don't need to say that and be over inclusive and to reflect that we're serving all communities. I think exercising that language sends a, sends the wrong message that we don't care about those communities. Even though it's not a real issue on the island and our transportation planning, I think it sends, sends the wrong message. And, and for that reason, I would keep that language in there and conform to what the, the county language is.
Okay. I will just add my commentary in, in support of everything that, that Commissioner Murphy just said, and the same with, with Kate, I'll cite two data points here. One, which is I know that this language was vetted very heavily by members of the community and people who are much more educated on the topics of race and equality and how that impacts our communities. And I am not going to sit here and pretend that I'm going to know better than them in that regard. So that's number one, I, I know and trust and have faith in the people who are invested in in these sorts of issues and that they've made correct decisions on that. Number two, I'll challenge a little bit Mike's assertion that we don't have a problem here. While I don't think there are as many systemic things as maybe exist historically. I can tell you and I can ask each of you, go look at the deed to your property. Because if you live on First Hill, very likely your deed includes language that I know my original deed and plat map contains, which says the homes on First Hill cannot be sold to people of the black race. It's still to this day and signing the paperwork has that language in there. So while, yes, there may be things that are less systemically influencing these communities. We do have a history here on the island as everywhere in the US. And to Mike's point, I think it just sends the statement that we're putting the trust in the folks that actually have a stake in this much more than I can ever be educated enough to to argue against. So that's my position, yes.
I'll, I'll just say one short rebuttal and that, that's all. I, I know there, I've seen also in deeds, I think through the University of Washington's project, that there were restriction, restrictive covenants against members of the Asian race, members of the Jewish community. So that's, you know, I, I feel that this language excludes them and they've, they faced similar hardships in the past. So that, that, that's all I wanted to add.
Yep. Carolyn?
Two things. One, I would like to also add that I'm not sure that I really know about transportation challenges or, or needs that have not been met on Mercer Island by various groups. I, I really, I really don't know the answer to that question. And, you know, maybe there's more to that than, than meets the eye. The other thing is what Adam just said, is there some way of changing this language so it's a little broader? I mean, you pointed out other discriminations that are not black, indigenous and other people of color. I'm looking at your draft comment, Adam, to see if there's a word we can pull over there.
I, I'll just say, I tried to go as broad as possible, but that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's my interpretation only.
What if we were to insert after other people of color and all communities? I know it gets a bit long and wordy, but it means the right thing. And that way, you know, it's true that when you, you make a list of certain people, well, yeah, who are you leaving out? Who are we to say that that's the only list of people who have been discriminated against? So maybe we could add that.
Kate?
I would suggest that we consider our own population demographics at present and that these exclusionary practices have impacted black communities and black families to an extent that persists. And if you look at the demographics of Mercer Island, they do not match the demographics of King County. We have more Asian families than most of King County. We have more Jewish families than most of King County. We do not have more black or indigenous families than the rest of King County. In fact, we have quite a bit fewer. So I think this is important. I agree that all communities that have been discriminated against should be considered. But I think deleting black and indigenous people is a mistake.
Carolyn?
Yeah, possibly I was misunderstood. I didn't mean to delete anything there. Yeah, I was just talking about, would, would there be, does anyone have any concern with adding the phrase and all communities after other people of color? Any concerns with that?
Victor?
I, I don't have any concerns, just the placement. There are two other communities that come after that, you've just been one of them, so there's.
Okay.
If it's just a, a, a language, one option could be to, let's see, to access to opportunities for all communities, we could put an including after that. It's just a language.
That would be good.
I think that's
You know, you kind of know what we're looking for here.
And, and in the spirit of wordsmithing, I think that you have an extra and in there other people of color, kind of giving your comma placement.
Wait until we get to a meeting where we spend a half an hour debating shall and should. Those are, those are the fun meetings.
You have one more?
Yeah, my preference would be to add all communities after needs. And again, it's the whitewashing problem. And in saying everybody's special before you state the problem, there's, and again, there's just a reason they led with black and indigenous.
So you, how would you like it to read then?
But I would say, and people with special transportation needs, comma, and all communities. That's where I would put the and. Again, to Chair Hubble's point, it, it could send a message if you put that in front of as opposed to being inclusive.
Well, okay, and another idea, Kate, would be to put it, okay, address the needs of and pro access, promote access to all communities. Let's see, promote access to opportunity for all communities, including black, indigenous and other people of color. I don't know. I, I, I guess I'm going to, I, I think I'll stop trying to wordsmith, I'm, I'm just going to dig myself in deeper.
I think we have consensus on the direction of finding a way to put this in here. Does anyone have an opposition to the staff finding the most appropriate way to do that and bringing, bringing it back? Okay, I've, I've got head nods on that. Michael, is that clear enough direction for you?
I think so. Adam, are you there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Maybe what we could do, I've got a word, I've got this same document in Word. Why don't I share my screen and we can just agree on the language here? That might be an easier way to do it and then, then we're not guessing at your intent.
Great.
So let me get that shared here. So this was one of the alternatives. It was, and promote access to, to opportunity for all communities, including. And then the other option as proposed by as proposed by Kate was to take this for all communities and put it here. Is there? Or I guess this should be
It doesn't, it actually doesn't work as well in the second spot because it says preventing and mitigating displacements of these groups.
Yeah, it's almost like it should go at the end. Instead of these groups, you could say mitigating displacement of all communities. I don't know if that then under like if that undercuts the statement prior, but grammatically, it doesn't fit well right there.
Right.
Or maybe if instead of including it said especially or something, you know, I don't know. I feel like it's fencing words and I I'm really concerned about the message it sends to modify the language.
I don't mind the use of specifically. I mean, I think that actually almost accentuates the point.
Well, another offer, another possibility, whoops. Another possibility is address the needs and promote access to opportunity for black, indigenous and other people of color and all communities. Whoops.
Sorry, my screen didn't. Why does it keep doing that? I'm sorry.
Jumpy jumpy.
Yeah.
Oh, let's see. So let me try this again. Address the needs of and promote access to opportunities for black, indigenous, people of color and all communities. People with lower no incomes, et cetera, et cetera. Does that work?
So I I I'm going to go back with Kate on this, which is, I know that there have been groups of people that have worked this language from the county planning policies, and I guarantee you they've spent hundreds of hours getting it to the proposals that were given to us from those policies. The seven of us, I hate to say, are not smarter than any of them. And while I do understand the idea of trying to be more inclusive, that's actually to Kate's point, not the intent of this policy. So
Yeah, I like Kate's proposed language. I think that's good specifically. That's fine. I I'm good with that.
I don't know if that I think that's what Adam put up there. I don't think that's what Kate suggested.
I thought she did.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of saying access to opportunity for all communities, black, indigenous and other people of color, and however you want to do that, but almost the way it was originally written, but just put all communities in there. I think it covers the gamut of what we're trying to say without applying heavy emphasis anywhere else, right? Just saying.
I feel that.
Go ahead, Kate.
I feel that people of color addresses the vast majority of groups.
Well, I don't disagree with you. Leave it in there. That's fine. I'm just saying how it's originally written and then put all communities in like we had originally stated. For all communities, I'm not a fan of specifically, but I think if we keep it all in there, I think it covers the full range of what we're trying to do. And I think everybody is somewhat happy with the language that's contained there. Right? I think it addresses what Vice President Murphy stated. You know, Adam was in favor of all communities in general, but because that's more consistent with what we got, what is in 3.1 Adam? Adam R. anyways, and then but you know, if all communities works along with black and indigenous and other people of color, we can do that too, right? I'm just saying, I mean, I think we're making mountains out of molehills here and like like the chair said, you know, people have spent hundreds of hours doing this and we're rewriting and rewording it to suit maybe personal bias and prejudice of our own, right? So.
Well, you you just made my argument to remove the all communities and not do anything here. So Kate, I'll let you speak and then.
I guess I'll just say a last statement, which is if you say all communities, it includes white communities and this statement is specifically written to exclude white communities. You can call that prejudice?
I but why would you want to say that, though?
Why? Why?
Would you want to say something that excludes white communities?
So
Because they're underserved also, right?
Okay, I don't want this to turn into a diversity. I don't want this to turn into a diversity debate. I'm gonna I'm gonna move this forward. Do I have four people in favor of including the all communities language?
Well, excuse me, I I mean, don't you still have people discussing? Don't you still have people discussing this, Dan?
I do, Carolyn, and this is going to turn into a like a really big fireball if if we're not careful.
Well, let's trust, let's trust each other that we're not going to turn into a fireball. I mean, we're just about there. People might have a few more things to say. And rushing
If you I will give everyone one opportunity to say their last their last comments on the what you start if you'd like.
I, yeah. So Mike, Michael Curry, I I don't agree that we're, let's see, I think you mentioned making a mountain out of a molehill. I think we're doing something important here. And the fact that it's a bit difficult probably reflects that it's kind of important. So, you know, I I appreciate all the things everybody has said. If the countywide planning folks did not think in terms of making this broader, like the word all communities would do, in my thought, maybe they kind of missed an opportunity there. So I I I rather like it to say all communities, remove the word specifically, comma, and then just go right on in and leave it as is. I think that's a pretty good suggestion. That's what I would
I would agree with that. That was kind of my point, right? I mean.
Okay, last statement to see, I'm I'm going to go to Commissioner Murphy next because I see his hand raised and then I'll come back to you, Adam.
Yeah, I I I understand the desire to reflect the all communities, but there's a bit of a structural problem with the sentence then, because if you look to the end, we're talking about then while preserving and mitigating displacement of these groups. Well, that means you're mitigating and preventing displacement of all communities. And remember what this policy is about is about transportation planning and transfer providing our transportation facilities and services. So I I do think that, you know, if you if you try to insert that all communities, we end up with this bizarre structural problem of you're not going to, you know, affect or or harm any community. Well, that's simply not the case when you're building transportation facilities.
Adam?
Um, I I agree with Commissioner Boatsman's suggestion to, yeah, I like the idea of adding all communities and not striking the existing text referring to black, indigenous and people of color.
Um, Kate?
I'm just correcting my previous statement. White people with low or no incomes are included in this statement without having the word all communities. I I don't see the point of it, and I think it sends a very bad message to people that have been disenfranchised.
Yes, Victor.
What if we were to say in the interest of finding a middle ground here, what if we were to say underserved communities rather than all?
I could go with that.
Okay, thank you, Victor. The suggestion is underserved communities.
Thank you.
Adam, how do you feel about that? Is that a fair compromise? Okay. All right, hearing nothing from online. Give me a Commissioner Curry, Commissioner Murphy, are you guys okay with that language change? I'm seeing head nods. Okay. All right, that is what we will move forward. Looks like we have consensus. That is what we will move forward to the public hearing draft. We will hear either hear nothing or we will hear everything about those changes.
All right, I'll turn it back over to Michael from KPG.
Thank you for your patience, Michael.
Yeah, no problem. It's good getting through there. So let's see, can everybody see my screen again?
Hmm, not yet.
Okay. How's that?
Yes, and I believe run policy 7.4.
Yes, so we got 3.3 done, moving on to 7.4. Let's see. Yeah, so what we did here is, you know, hearing from staff about getting requests when I have street closures and talking about giving them a little bit of support to not do that rather than writing a memo about why it's going to be a problem. We wanted to add a goal here. In general, we also think it's a good idea. We came back to you with a policy that added the street composure and connectivity and minimizing travel distance emergency vehicle response times. We tried to bring it into an existing policy you see down below 7.8 and it got too wordy and I think you all had a good comment about too much going on in one policy. So what we're proposing now is keeping the existing policy 7.8, which is to strive to create a complete connected active transportation system allowing direct and safe access for active transportation modes, keeping that one, but then adding separately a new policy that's much is just more focused and clean, emphasize transportation network connectivity to minimize travel distances and emergency vehicle response times by avoiding street closures. So that's our our proposal to you tonight. Just want to see if that's okay or do you want to make some changes or leave it the way it was?
So if we're looking at gray box page 17 and 18, it would be adding purple 7.4 emphasizing transportation network connectivity, blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera. And then seven, what is now numbered as 7.10, which is the existing policy that had been altered originally. And then what is numbered 7.9, I believe, is the two as it was provided last time where they had munged them together. So where you see a green strike through 7.8, that was the one where they were sort of together that we saw last time. And then they are basically proposing strike the combined one and we would have the new 7.4 and the one that is currently labeled 7.10. Isn't that great how I get to interpret all that? Carolyn?
So I I'm puzzled, Dan. Why do you think that they have struck the old 7.9?
It it's it's the note here that says remove these edits and the policy is shown as 7.10 below.
Oh. Okay, okay, okay. So that is indeed struck. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification.
Adam?
I think the staff proposed alternative, yeah, clarifies that. I like the the splitting, keeping the what? Whatever, keep keeping the original one and adding this new one as 7.4.
Okay, Kate?
I agree.
Okay.
But I did want to say again, there's a discrepancy between the packet, the agenda packet and the text. The agenda packet indicates the staff proposed alternative. It's a little bit different phrasing, so I just want to make sure that we're all agreeing on the same thing, which is agenda packet item or 18, gray box 18. Is that hard to say that? Gray box 18? Yeah, as opposed to what is written on page gray box page nine.
And what part do you see as different? So essentially in the staff packet, what is labeled as existing policy 7.8?
They're different sentences. So on the first one, it ends with avoiding street closures and then on gray box 16, avoiding street closures is in the middle of the sentence.
Adam, we did, we we worked that at some point. So they are probably the sentences are slightly different.
Yeah, I like the way it's written in the on page 18 as opposed to page nine, gray box 18 as opposed to gray box nine. The purple and green is good. That's my comment.
I'm reading them as the same, but this here is actually 7.10 on this page and that's identical. And this
That is identical, seventh this one.
Okay, that is identical to this.
But what's on the back side?
This is the one that's being struck. This is what was in the previous version where they were munged together. That was the whole point is last time we had 7.8 where they tried to put them together and they've broken them out. So 7.8 is struck. The old 7.8 is being struck altogether in this view.
Okay, but there's no strike through on
Remove, yes, exactly. But that's what their note here says, remove these edits to the policy and as shown in 7.10 below. It 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 was unclear the way they phrased it. It should have been like crossed through.
Okay, thank you.
So yes, I understand your confusion. Okay, so Carolyn?
I feel like we're partway there. I think that I like the 7.10. That's very clear. The 7.4, I think it makes a lot of sense if you if you if the sentence reads emphasize transportation network connectivity to minimize travel distances and emergency response times period. But adding by avoiding street closures, I think we still have this sort of confusing sentence that we had before. I I really don't know exactly what this addresses and I don't think it's very clear to a reader. So what this means?
So to that point, Michael, and I believe you may have talked about this in our one of our last conversations. Street closures has a very specific transportation planning definition, correct, which is like a street enclosure where through traffic is not allowed at an intersection. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean periodically staff has gotten requests of wanting to cul de sac a street to kind of reduce traffic through traffic on their street. Generally don't want to do that for these two reasons we described here. Yes, well, it's been it's getting at a specific issue is what the way it's written now.
Carolyn?
In follow up to that, is there a way you could write this so average person reading it would know what was meant? And I think I heard you use the word stack the street. I don't know what that means.
I'm sorry, cul de sac, where like a dead end street.
Okay, well, you know, I think, I I mean, I I love the idea that you want to get this policy in here, but I just think that any any person who picks this up should be able to understand what you mean and I don't understand what this means.
Kate?
Yeah, I'm 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 kind of questioning because you said there's a very specific definition of street closures and transportation lingo, but it would be easier to understand. Maybe if we just said by keeping streets open or street ends open. I don't I I understand it better now that it's been explained, but maybe there needs to be a footnote referencing what street closure means in that case. Because it is confusing to a layperson.
Yeah, the the practical example would be 24th over First Hill where you have like four or five streets that all but 24th. And on to the north, for example, they they exit out at the park. If you closed the entrance off of 24th so that in order to get to the park, you had to go around and not cut through the 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 street neighborhood. Berkeley is infamously known for doing this sort of doing this thing where they close the end of a street. doing this thing where they close the end of a street. And part of my question to you, Michael, was street closures does indeed, and it was a question, not a statement, but in our last conversation about this, you made it seem to me that there was a nomenclature that is being used here around street closures that is in fact known in the transportation community. If so, great, do we need a either A a definition or B to, I think Carolyn's point and Kate's point? Is there a way that we can rephrase that in a way that is more layman, but makes the same point? Victor?
Or to add to what you just said, at least something in parentheses that is I E this. So use the use the lingo, the transportation lingo. But I support what Kate and Carolyn said, which is let's put this in the language of mere morals that we can all understand.
Right now, this to me, I I when I read this, I think of people putting barricades out in the street because, you know, if something that's going on, I I don't know what a street closure is.
And that was exactly my read. I I read it. I was like, oh, temporary street closures and apparently not.
I I agree. Yeah, like when I first read it, I thought of Seattle's safe streets from COVID. And then when the example I think was given of what Bellevue does off of Bellevue Way for those residential areas, then it's like, okay, that that clarified it for me. So yeah, let's
Sunday, you know?
So, Michael, does that make sense? Can we just maybe add a parenthetical there that says, for example, you know, creating a cul-de-sac out of a street or, you know, closing one end of a through street? To me, that would be the most logical definition, right? Closing one end of a through street.
So trying to Yeah, this is all we appreciate everybody's thoughts here. I just want to maybe come to a place where we can actually pick the words. So I don't go off with Adam and maybe miss miss the mark again. But I think you all understand what we're getting at. It would be, you've seen it around the area where it might benefit a few homes to do a street closure at a certain point because now no longer through traffic comes in front of them. They might be at the end of it. So it might benefit them, but there'd be other houses that would now have to drive a longer distance to get to their house. And if we do have an issue with, you know, some kind of emergency response, you know, it just makes it longer to get to those other places. So if if there's a way to, we could select the words to maybe get at that concept, it would be more understandable by the layperson. I don't know. Can we craft that?
So I think there's two concepts here. I think one is the permanency of the closure. I'm getting the sense that most people here were thinking of like closing the road for a for a parade or something that is very temporal versus closing the end of a street to prevent through traffic. And so I think using through the prevention of through traffic and the permanency somehow needs to be reflected based on what I've heard and I'm seeing some head nods in street closure.
I think it would help to just add the word permanent in front of street. That might be a start.
Okay.
Yeah, the risk there, though, is that it's not like closing a whole street to traffic. It's actually just closing one end of the street so that you can't pass through a point. You could even close a street mid block so that you'd have to come in from either side, but you can't go through. So it's really about closing the through traffic on a street.
You could say by avoiding permanent through traffics.
Yeah, so I I would just say I get the sense that those are the concepts that are missing here for most folks. I see Adam, you came on camera. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna say it could say permanent closure of streets to through traffic.
There you go. Great. I'm glad we brought I'm glad we brought smart people to the room tonight. Okay, great. And then I think we have one more for the transportation element.
Okay. Let's see. Yeah, last one we got here was a request for a new policy. And there are a couple of ideas that were presented. First one was specific to as we're both had started with. First one here is study opportunities to expand electric bicycle facilities that serve the town center light rail station and park and ride. We also then heard a little broader a comment to expand it to provide innovative last mile solutions. So you can see the second alternative here, study opportunities to provide innovative last mile solutions. Again, serving the town center light rail station and park and ride. Yeah, so there's two two versions here. And again, open it up to you all.
Okay, Kate?
I don't want to lose electric bicycle. I think we need to call that out because it is it's here. The wave is here. There are so many of them. And I'm wondering if we couldn't under this twelve X after the word bicycle add and other last mile solutions. And then we get the innovation thing more broadly, but we we don't lose the electric bicycle component.
Okay, Commissioner Murphy, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, why don't we just do both of those? There's no reason we have to choose one or the other. They're both good ideas.
Yeah, I think Kate was putting him into one, but I sort of agree that I, you know, having both. It looks like the suggestion, Michael, was for the the last mile solutions to be in section four because that's the one that relates to choice, if I'm correct.
Yeah, the alternative two wouldn't be as wouldn't be section twelve is specific to pedestrians and bicycles, so it wouldn't quite work as well there. I think it'd be fine if you did combine them and specifically mentioned bicycle facilities to keep it in twelve. But if it lost some reference to pedestrians and bicycles, may you may need to move it to four.
Adam?
A possible quick nitpick. I I do like the idea of bicycle and innovative last mile. Perhaps study, does that come with any financial implications? Perhaps we could just like consider. I I don't know if study comes with, oh, that means money goes to it for sure, or must. I don't know what that triggers. Especially since we're we're adding something, which I I think is a good comment for us to add. But I know there's been some concern, you know, from staff as well as one of the comments we received from residents about keeping that scope narrow. So just just thinking about study, does it? Does it imply more too much?
Do we? I I don't have the ability to see all of the attendees. I don't know if either Allison or Jeff are on to comment on that language. Or Adam, if you have any comments on that. Oh, there's Allison. Hello.
I'm here. Yeah, I'm just pondering that. I do think study implies a bit more than a word like consider. So, you know, I think that's something to think about, you know, is there something that we want to be more of a program or just something we're thinking about? I think there are some resources that the city has already related to these last mile solutions, so study might be appropriate in this case, but I'll leave that to you all to make a final decision.
Okay. I'm not sure it it makes as much of a difference as you might imply. That's just my experience. Certainly in this document, I don't if there there's other places where it might be a little bit more toothy, so to speak.
Okay, I am. I'm I'm one. I'm the new guy, so I trust your your insight.
I have, I think, slightly heard a, and if I can just get sort of a look around the room, a desire to sort of include both of these concepts, both retaining the electric bicycle and the last mile. Is there an inclination to either have it as one policy or to actually include it as two? One in in goal twelve and the second one in goal four? You don't have a preference?
The two, like you said, the second thing you said.
So so have two distinctly different ones, Adam?
I I would disagree with that. I like the one one sentence mentioning both. If we have a separate goal that specifies the solution, we're, you know, bicycle facilities. You know, the the system engineer in me says, don't don't specify, don't give the answer. You know, give a suggestion. So if we've split into two, we're we're given the answer saying, let's study this instead of just all last mile. Especially bicycle. So I I like seeing them lumped together in one. But once again, minor minor nitpick.
Okay, I'm in the let me get to see if anyone else, and then I'll get back to you, Carol. Any other comments before I go back to Carolyn, either Commissioner Curry or Commissioner Murphy, any preference?
Quite sure. I was gonna say I would. I would agree with Adam's statement.
Commissioner Murphy?
I would disagree and go with two separate because they're dealing with two two different issues. One's broader and one's more specific.
Okay. Kate, did you have anything before I go to Carolyn again? You don't have to say anything. Victor, nothing. Carolyn, go ahead.
Well, if we look at what goal twelve is about, it's promoting bicycle and pedestrian networks. So the new policy that is called twelve X does refer to expanding electric bicycle facilities. So I like that, and I think it should be in goal twelve. But the Forex says, study opportunities to provide innovative last mile solutions. That's a much that's a bigger topic. It's 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 it almost doesn't fit under best bicycle and pedestrian networks. So I think it's a great policy, but it probably needs to go up to goal four. So I agree with Michael on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's six of one, half a dozen. It's all structural. The clean view of this would be to have them separate because I think as we've pointed out in other places, like you want to go to the section to find the thing that you're talking about. And to have stuff referenced in other places is not as clean, but I think the intent is met in either way. So I'm just gonna call for one, and if that doesn't fail, then we'll assume the other. I guess I'll say, is there consensus around joining these into one? Into one item in goal number twelve? Show of thumbs, having them conjoined, just have one item that basically says study opportunities to expand electric bicycle facilities and other last mile solutions that serve the town center like rail station and parking ride in goal twelve. Consensus for that? I thought you wanted them together.
After hearing Commissioner Boatsman's argument, I I agree with her.
All right. Great. Okay, so hearing now, is there consensus on having these as two separate policies, one in goal twelve and one in goal four? All right, I see at least four hands, five hands with online. So we have enough for consensus. Thank you. So, Michael, to summarize, we actually like alternative three, which is retain both. If that makes sense.
Yes, yeah, that works. Okay, we'll make that change.
Great.
Lastly, at our last meeting, there was a comment about adding pick my word, a new policy that would put in more detailed implementation processes for the pedestrian bicycle facilities plan. And I won't probably say it as good legalese as was written here. But basically, high level, we don't think that's appropriate for the transportation element, which has pretty specific requirements is how to establish a project list, which is done through annual six year transportation improvement program. It's adopted and moved forward in that manner and having another implementation program in addition to that could potentially be confusing. Again, I'm like, there's a lot more written around that, but the the main takeaway is we don't recommend that. We do have in the transportation element in the project list. If you look through there, we do have a specific project to implement the pedestrian bicycle facilities program. It is down here. Yeah, project non-motorized project number nine, specifically getting at that to implement the ped bike program over time with this with a new update coming along of the whole the whole plan in a in a couple of years. But just wanted to bring that was another comment we heard at last meeting and wanted to address that.
Okay. Any objection to that? Kate?
I was confused when I read the packet because it just talked about the transportation policy generally. So I was gonna state that I think I was the one that raised a suggestion that we have implementation explicitly for the bicycle pedestrian plan. It sounds like they're not separate. I'm wondering about the they're not, you can't split that apart. I'm wondering about N M number nine and if this is not the appropriate process to talk about the language for N M nine, because I don't think it quite gets at what it says annual program to identify prioritize design and construct spot improvements and get completion projects. I'm just wondering about prioritization, you know, is that like a six year C I P? How is that? Because I think what really I'm hearing from the bicycle community is that they want some sense of which projects are going to happen first and when are they going to happen? Because it feels arbitrary. It feels like, you know, it feels arbitrary to the bicycle community. So I want to resolve that. That was the
So this chart, correct me if I'm wrong, someone from the staff is in attachment to the comp plan, but is actually adopted by the council on a annual or semi-annual basis. Is that correct? That non-motorized plan? Or is that actually something that's codified through this process?
This is out of my think I can help out here. So the the table that's in the element is a project list. And and that's for the the planning period of the plan, right? And that that project list eventually gets fed into our six year transportation improvement program. And that's adopted by the council every year. The the tip is. And that's where they decide, you know, which projects the Public Works is going to undertake in the coming year in the coming six years, and that's updated every year. The N M number nine is talking about updating the the bicycle and ped plan. Coming out of that plan will be other projects to go on to. Like, once we update the bike and ped plan, that should update the list of bike and ped projects that then would feed into that that tip process. So we have to have the the plan has to get updated first, and then that will set some of those projects, those non-motorized projects to then get on to our tip. Does that make sense? And the only thing I'd add to that is that the bike and ped plan, when it gets updated within that plan, it should have some get at some prioritization and implementation process for how those are going to move forward. Like in what order, maybe some get some description of how they might be funded. But I think once that that plan gets updated, the ped and bike facilities plan that should get at should answer some of these questions that you're looking for.
Yeah, I think the bike community was looking to see explicitly the implementation piece in this because what's missing is schedule and and funding. So the bike community is and and funding. So the bike community is offered to the city multiple times to uh, write grants. Uh, there are two, at least two bike groups that are nonprofits on Mercer Island, and they would like to partner with the city and write grants for some of these projects, but that doesn't seem to really go anywhere. So they want to understand how can they support these processes? Um, what are the funding sources? And when are things gonna happen?
Uh, and and I think the the answer to when unfortunately is that that gets determined through that bike and ped plan update, and that's going to be a uh, two years from now project. That's when it's placed on our our transportation improvement program. So it's coming, it's uh, that will be the process by which to get that input, uh, particularly from the bike community.
Probably not the answer they want to hear, but.
Well, they're also the six year. The six-year tip, um, right, every year will include, you know, the city's first choice for ped and bike projects. Those are, they pretty much is always some on that list as well. Uh, but the whole evaluation of the citywide ped bike facilities um, will be updated in two years.
Okay, I saw Victor first and another view, Carolyn. Skip, I'm gonna play a reverse.
I was gonna say what Adam just said, just as a clarification.
As a as a clarification to Kate. Great. I think for the purposes that we're doing here, what she's describing is out out of scope, and it's not about implementation or budget.
Yeah. Carolyn?
Skip.
Skip. All right. Anybody else want to play Uno? We're a plus two, draw four. Oh, see, I didn't play a reverse, Carolyn. We can't go back that way. Uh, Victor, go ahead. This, this was, are we still on this portion or are we almost about to move off of? Um, I just need to know, is everyone okay with the um, the suggestion that they have here around um the uh, yes, what's on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, do we have consensus to move forward? With that? Three, I've got four, five. Great. We have enough, we will move on. Um, sorry, Victor, yes. Before we move on, we had a comment from the public on some specific language. It was in an email, and I'm unclear as or whether it's transportation element for land use. It was were designated as a high-capacity transit community. Where is that?
Um, I can help with that. Um, so that comment was in reference to the land use element.
Okay, so I'm willing to wait. That's fine. Great. Um, Carolyn, and then I want to make sure these guys are done before we move on to um, a break and then the land use.
Okay. So um, I was looking at my notes as to things I had brought up and then looking to see how they had been addressed in the um, the new version. And um, I have a couple of things that I I don't see uh, having been addressed, and maybe I'm mistaken. One of them was in goal five. Uh, five point six, and and you know, help me if I am not remembering how this was treated at our last meeting. I had suggested in five point six to include the phrase mitigate the effects of climate change after the word reduce air pollutants. And I thought we agreed to do that. Um, mitigate the effects of climate change is again, that's different from air pollutants or air quality or clean transportation. It's there are ways to improve the impact of transportation decisions on on climate change. So anybody have any thoughts on that?
I recall having the conversation, but remember the outcome. I have two suggestions on how to proceed, but Victor, you go first.
Which is ask, i- isn't that covered further up where it says directives are related to climate change and greenhouse gas reduction?
Directives, where's where is that? What what policy?
Five, six.
In five, directives. I don't see the word directive. Oh, oh, excuse me. So this is complying with state directives, initiatives and directives. Okay. Related. So they're telling you which state initiatives and directives to comply with, and then they list these three things. Um, I think that that should include mitigating the effects of climate change. I think the list is too short. So I agree, I agree that they're complying with state initiatives and directives. Oh, okay, so related to climate change. I see what you're saying.
I think structurally, that's what Victor's saying is that it's actually saying to mitigate climate change, these are the three things that you need to look at to implement.
Climate change and greenhouse, yeah. Yeah, and then, you know, they say they want to comply with state initiatives and directives related to climate change and greenhouse gas reduction. Okay, okay, so that's a separate phrase from the next sentence. Okay, I see that it's covered. I think, yeah. Thanks, Victor. And then I had another one that I brought up, which is a a bigger topic. And um, I thought that staff had said they were going to bring back some proposed language, but I don't see anything on it here. This is um under goal nine. And I had suggested a new policy regarding the use of public rights of way for public benefit. And we all talked about this quite a bit, and there's a lot of you know, the more specific we got, the more confused we got. But I I guess I would still suggest a new policy um, after nine point one. And I would put it very simply, strive to preserve the use of public right of way for public benefit. We don't have a policy like that in our comprehensive plan at this time. And there's a number of uses of public right of way that are simply for private benefit. So I think opening the door to that concept in our comprehensive plan um, would be a good idea.
So I remember talking about this, uh, I I don't want to say lengthy, but I remember we talked about it. I mean, it warrants maybe going back to look at the tape, but my recollection was is that um, after some back and forth, um, there was not consensus to move that direction, but I'm willing to be corrected if that was a wrong. I see Victor, you want to say something?
That was my recollection as well. We did, we did cover it. We did discuss it, and I, we we didn't get support for it.
I agree that there wasn't support for it as it was put forth in that meeting. So I just want to check with uh, Commissioner Boatsman, are you suggesting a a different language?
Yes.
Because before, what I remembered us discussing in the meeting was you explicitly said preserve parking in the right of way, and that's what didn't move forward. But what I hear the commissioner expressing now is public use and public right of way, which I can get behind. Um, preserving public use. I just think there wasn't consensus on parking because people found that it can well, I won't open that.
Well, I I want to point out, though, that at the end of our discussion, yeah, we didn't agree, but Allison said she would look into it and offer some language for us to consider. So I I'm not seeing that in the packet. But I'm proposing some language that I think is um, far more benign that offers the opportunity to begin to consider when new houses are built. Should their landscape and their boulders that they put out all the way to the pavement to keep you from driving on their landscape? Is that a good thing? You know, should should at least open the door to um, beginning to consider it, consider these matters without being specific as to you know, exactly what that might be. It it might be using it in some places for public trees. Um, it might be using it in some places for uh, well, I'll just leave it at that.
I have two questions. Um, the first, uh, all in relation to that, which is public right of way in new construction, I believe, is preserved this public right of way. I don't believe they can put boulders there to prevent parking, but we can be corrected by staff uh, on that, because I think there may be, if there could be an enforcement issue that's just not being dealt with, and that's a a very different issue. And then number two, um, you made it sound like you might have some specific language that you would like to propose currently.
Yeah.
So uh, I see Victor wants to say something, and then if you can prepare your your specific language, then we can go to that.
So I'm I'm beginning to remember this conversation, and I think you're right. I think where we landed on this was, no, people aren't able to put boulders in the public right of way. That's a code issue and a code enforcement issue. Um, and so that's, that's not a, that's not a possibility, or at least, you know, it's certainly a possibility, but we then have.
It's not a policy issue. It's an enforcement issue.
Enforcement.
Yeah. That that was my recollection, too. I think, yeah, that was enforcing what's already on the book.
I mean, this is why you see driveways that are paved only five feet. And then you've got gravel between that driveway and the street because they can't pave that five-foot section because it's unimproved right of way. Like, it's designed to not, like, the code, as I understand it, is designed to not allow any of that anyway. So um, and again, if if Adam has a different view on the Adam being staff Adam on that from our, A, my understanding of code and B, my understanding of our conversation last time. Um, and then if you have any comments, Adam, and then I'll go to Carolyn for any specific language that she may wish to propose.
Sure, I'll I'll do my best. I I've only watched the video. I wasn't here in September. I was uh, backpacking around Mount Rainier. So we'll see, uh, we'll, we'll see what I what I remember from the tape, but I I do believe that is primarily an enforcement issue rather than a policy issue. So public right of way is land that's dedicated to the public use for transportation. Um, it's, we have specific code provisions that um, any um, a- any, any activity in the right of way that may pose a danger to traffic or otherwise impede traffic can be removed if that's determined by the city engineer to be causing a hazard or an obstruction. So we already have pretty strong provisions in the code to protect our right of way um, for public use, um, because that by virtue of it being public right of way, it is public land for public use, just just like parkland is the same way. I mean, or any other public land.
And Adam, my understanding of the parsing of the language is there's an unim- there's an improved part of the right of way, which would be the street and the pavement, and there's potentially an unimproved portion, which like in First Hill where where we're at, Carolyn, could be another ten to fifteen feet to the side of the road that's just unimproved. And I think that's the portion that you're talking about, Carolyn. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And and that unimproved portion of the right of way is also subject to those code provisions. So if you were to create a hazard in that unimproved area, it it it's subject to removal from the by the city if it's if it's creating a hazard. So it we have pretty strong protections in place um for that unimproved portion of the right of way as well in the code.
Okay. Hearing that, do you still have something you want to propose?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have some things I would like to say about what I've heard. Um, I want to most emphatically remove my references to boulders on people's grass. There's a lot of that out there, but um, I'm I'm kind of creating a misimpression as to what my concern is. What my concern is, is public right of way that's not available for use by the public. People have, if you, if you you know, walk down the street, you will see maybe every six to eight houses. People who have landscaped their personal landscape all the way out to the pavement. But that might be over fifteen feet of public right of way. Nobody else is using that public right of way anymore after they put their landscape out there, even if it's just grass. So when the, when the delivery vehicle comes to their house, they park it in the street. When they have a house cleaner coming to work on their house, they park their car in the paved area that is used on these narrow streets for driving. So um, yeah, I'm not talking about, a- and I'm not talking about anything that necessarily creates a hazard, other than the fact that you you know, can't use that anymore when you're walking down the street in your middle of the road. That's a bit of a hazard. There isn't anything in the code that prohibits people from putting their landscape all the way out to the paving. And there's, and that public right of way is then co-opted into those people's personal use. So there is no strong protection in the code against doing that, and all of this public land is, you know, not available to the public to use anymore, for whatever the reasons the public might use it. Maybe as a pedestrian walking down the street to keep out of the way of that delivery truck. Or maybe it's, you know, to plant some trees that would do some good. And I I, you know, um, as opposed to someone's lawn. Um, maybe it's for allowing the guy who's remodeling your basement to park his truck who's there every single day. And I, yeah, I took a lot of pictures today. I went around and I took pictures of landscapes that are all the way out to the road, took pictures of, you know, cars that are servicing some of those homes that are parked in the street. And, you know, I just think that we need to begin to look at that matter. And and so here's my policy that I'm, my language I'm proposing. This follows, by the way. In goal nine, here's a nine point one. Strive to minimize traffic impacts to neighborhoods and fo- foster a pedestrian-friendly environment. Okay, I'm proposing number nine point two, strive to preserve the use of public right of way for public benefit. And that would be it.
Okay. Any comments?
Yeah, I I have a comment. Sorry, Adam, go ahead if you're gonna go.
Go ahead, Commissioner Curry.
Um, so do we or don't we have enforcement in the books about right of ways?
Uh, yes, we do. We also have a process for and regulations that apply to encroachment into public right of way. Um, which requires uh, um, any encroachment into public right of way requires an encroachment agreement. Um, subject to specific standards in the code.
Okay, so is this more of a matter than that? It's kind of like out of sight, out of mind mentality almost, where people are not complaining, so there's no enforcement happening? And by implementing this proposed policy, we're just kind of double downing on existing policy that already exists?
Uh, yeah, our enforcement is complaint-based, so if we don't receive complaints about a particular encroachment in a right of way, it's likely to not receive enforcement action from the city. Um, but we, as Adam was saying, we have uh, code provisions that specify what can go in the right of way and a process for reviewing and approving those those agreements.
Okay, Adam?
I I can read the, what I believe to be the code, um, nineteen point oh nine point oh six oh, alpha one. It is unlawful for anyone to excavate, alter, tunnel under, obstruct, or place any structure upon any public right of way without first obtaining a right of way permit from the city. Um, or fail to comply with any conditions attached to such right of way permit. So I I see that as it's unlawful to obstruct without a permit.
Can we define structure, please, as opposed to someone's lawn and bushes?
I would also call your attention to nineteen oh six oh six oh, encroachment into the public right of way. Um, the first subsection here says an encroachment is any intrusion irrespective of height or size into a sidewalk, street, or other public right of way and includes, but is not limited to, fill material, retaining walls, rockeries, plants, either deliberately planted or growing from adjacent property, or any other material or structures.
Okay. Um, let me ask you then, how is it that new development goes in? And these landscapes in the last three months are going all the way out to the street? Why is the city allowing this to happen and saying that it's up to us citizens to come in and complain about every one of these things?
Well, most likely those people have already got an encroachment agreement that allows that to go in there. This code section I was just referencing goes on to specify that encroachment agreements can allow these types of encroachments into the public right of way, and there's a set of criteria for how And there's a set of criteria for how those can be reviewed and approved.
Okay.
And I'll just add from a historical perspective, knowing Rich Conrad, the former city manager of, I don't know, 20 years or however long he was here. It was actually sort of the city's desire to actually have that space filled with things like plants and shrubs. Because otherwise you'd have 15 feet of gravel, nothingness, making your wa, your roads twice as wide and barren. And, um, and, and unattractive. And so I can tell you that, that that was the way that it was traditionally enforced. Which is why they have this encroachment agreement policy on there. There are other neighborhoods like ours, which are predate the incorporation of the city, most of the housing in those areas. When those rules weren't in effect. And so you'll see a lot of the landscaping going out to the roadway because even at that time, the, you know, at the time that they were built, that was just what the standard was. So that's not to say that you're not right, you're, you're not incorrect, Carolyn, that, you know, there's, there are places where people are taking advantage of it in a way where it is creating a hazard and we should deal with that as a community in one-off situations, but it's hard to tell whether someone has a, an encroachment agreement or there's something else just from looking at the way that it is there. Um, and so I would, you know, direct back to the staff, like, do we have the adequate code? That if there is a life safety or transportation or movement issue that, you know, do we not have the right mechanisms in place? It sounds like we do, but if there's a feeling that we don't, I'm not sure we're going to solve it in the comp plan.
Okay. And, and remember I was not necessarily always talking about a hazard. I'm talking about a loss of benefit. So. But thank you for this discussion. Thank you for reading the code. I was a little bit rusty on the part about the plants. I'm very doubtful that new construction is going in with agreements to put their landscaping out to the road, but I can look into that further. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I, I wanted to ask a question to staff because we do have a GIS system. Are encroachment agreements noted on parcels in our GIS system? Because that would certainly be helpful for people who want to research the topic.
Good question. I haven't checked that. I suspect that they likely are, but I would have to research that and follow up.
Yeah. In, in all likelihood, in the GIS data, it, it's probably filed with the parcel, but doesn't show up on the map. I don't think we have those like symbolized on there, but we have a great wealth of recorded documents saved with the parcels in our GIS system. So it is very likely that it is stored with that parcel or that, that lot in one way or another, but it may not be easy to see when you're just looking at the map. You'd have to do some digging.
Victor, sorry, Adam, did you have something first? No, Victor.
Just out of curiosity, can you give me a ballpark of how many encroachment, encroachment agreements the city has?
I can't hazard a guess, but there are a lot. So there's around 11,000 households in the city. I suspect there's probably thousands.
Yeah, thanks. And I would argue that plants and landscaping in the roadway is a public, or like in that unimproved area is a public benefit. I think we're opening a Pandora's box by moving into a community state where we're looking at tattling on people for, for things that aren't necessarily creating a safety hazard, but that's just my opinion. I want to move on to a break. We've been going for two and a half hours and I want to make sure that we don't have anything else left on the transportation piece of this. Before we do that, are we done with the transportation? Element?
Yeah, that's my understanding. Yes, I think we've worked through all the topics. So again, when we say done, we're done with this stage. As I mentioned, when we first got started, you know, there's, there will be a couple more touches of the planning commission on this. So we're, we're far from the final draft. You'll get another bite at the apple. Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, um, with that, we'll, um. Oh, sorry.
I, I did, I did have another one, but I think, oh, well covered in another touch or bite of the apple. That was in this one. Give everyone a chance to read it and we'll, we'll deal with it later.
Yeah.
It's minor.
Okay, great. Okay, with that, let's, we're going to conclude this. It is now eight 19. Let's take an 11 minute recess and we'll come back at eight 30 and start with the land use element, which is hopefully not going to take as long, but. Yeah. All right. Uh, so we're on recess for the next 10 minutes. Thank you.
Alfredo, can you hear me now? Okay, they can hear us, or at least my IT person can hear us. And hopefully there we go. There's Adam.
There's Adam.
It's, uh, it's great to be back in person and we know that there are going to be a few little quirks as we work out this hybrid situation. So, um. Great. We have readjourned and we are now on item number three related to the third draft of the land use element. Um, Adam, reconvene, readjourn, yeah, adjourned is yes, at the end. I'm sorry, my, my head, I'm, I'm not far behind you. Great. Adam, take it away.
All right. Great. Thank you. So for the third draft of the land use element, we'll use the same process we just used with the transportation element. Um, so I'll share my screen in a moment here and put up those, those couple of lingering issues from the last time we took a look at the element. And we'll get your comments. So let me, let me share my screen here. Here we go. Okay. So the first issue that was hanging out after the last planning commission review was a town center land use issue, issue number one, which is on page 13 of the element. The, the existing land use issue number one was a bit dated.
Adam slid in one second.
Where's this in our packet?
It's page 13 of the element. I'm not sure which page in the gray box it would be.
Yeah, 63.
Thank you. Yeah. Uh, and so the, are we good for me to continue my?
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, so the initial, the existing town center land use issue number one was a bit dated. It was talking about kind of the current issues surrounding town center at the time that the last, the last update was performed. So we were, or the planning commission asked staff to revise town center land use issue number one to more accurately kind of encompass the current, the current issues around town center. And particularly around kind of the, um, the pattern of development in the town center. So the staff draft is provided here. I thought, you know, there's a, there's a lot of underline in the, in the text because we pretty much struck out most of what was existing and, and are proposing it to replace it with this new language. So I wanted to provide a, a clean draft. So you guys had, had that, you could more easily read it. Um, I won't read the whole text here. Hopefully you've had a chance to review the, review the memo. And at this point, we take any comments. I've got it open in Word here. So if there's some minor tweaks to some wording, we can make those changes as we, as we go along here.
Does anyone, has everyone read it or? Okay, Victor, I see you're ready to make.
Fire. Fire away. Um, so I did go through it. I agree that the existing languages dated. But I, I, the way this is written, it, it almost sounds like what's happened in the town center is kind of accidental or by chance. And it's actually not the case. So if we take a look at mixed use development is replacing the existing commercial development as the town center redevelops. That's not by chance. The town center got rezoned, mixed use. And so let's be clear about what happened rather than making it sound like it's arbitrary or accidental. And then it says, this has led to an increase in the number of residential dwelling units in this area. Um, again, it was rezoned. What did you expect to happen? And so I, since we're striving for clarity here, let's actually be really clear about what, what's happened. And let's be factual about what happened. It was rezoned to mixed use. As a result, there was, there was more residential dwellings in the area. There isn't a concern that redevelopment will displace existing businesses. Existing businesses have been displaced. So again, let's be factual.
Uh, it would, it would help me if you had, uh, like a proposed change, if there was.
Town center consists of many one-story strip centers surrounded by parking lots. Town center was rezoned as mixed use and I'm sure you can find the date. Uh, I believe it's around 2016.
Actually, that's not correct. The mixed use zoning was adopted, I believe in 1993 or 1994.
Okay.
It was updated in 2016, but it was already mixed use.
Yeah, the original town center plan was adopted 93. That's what I, I wrote down here to the.
All mixed use? Was it all mixed use?
Correct. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. They changed some of the, the height limits have been changed over time, you know, based on various things, but.
So I, I mean, I can, uh, I can speculate on dates, but it sounds like you've got the dates. So can we just say zoning was updated? It was changed from.
I would just refer to the, the original adoption of the town center plan rather than the, rather than individual zoning saying, you know, adoption of the town center, uh, subarea plan in 1993 has, you know, specified mixed use development, which has been replacing the existing commercial development, something along those lines.
Right.
Adam.
I, I know we had a, a, like a comment to the commission, kind of talking about both that residential zone north as well as, you know, what's in this, in the city center. Maybe we can also articulate. You know, they, I think they were suggesting like concentrates growth south of the light rail station in the town center, perhaps. You know, work, work something in that, like this zoning makes the, you know, south of, south of the transit center, the kind of natural place to concentrate any new growth. Just, just a thought.
I might go maybe at the beginning of like town center.
So there's a part of me that just like, doesn't want to write this here on the fly. Like I think, I think like there's themes that we need to catch. And if you want to grab a couple of bullet points, like otherwise we're going to be here until 11 o'clock picking over.
Definitely.
So maybe the city council is all going to rewrite, by the way, not to be jaded, but they're going to rewrite this whole paragraph. With my own bleep in the middle of that conversation. So. So I would say like, do you have themes? No laughing. So if you have themes, like I think that's good. Like let's make a call out that there was intentionality around the alignment of where density was going to happen. You know, to reduce it on other parts. Carolyn, did you have something in a similar vein?
Yeah, I'm just really pleased to hear the notion of making this more accurate, really telling what happened as opposed to like, kind of making it sound like things just sort of happen on their own. So yeah, those are good changes and I'm happy to have them drafted up. I feel that we'll have something to look at that should be pretty close.
Okay. Any other themes, Kate? Sorry.
As we're doing that, I think it's really important to talk about the regional context because these changes didn't occur out of thin air or because somebody had a, you know, growth agenda. The region was growing. And I think the city responded to that and the PSRC put different requirements for us. So I think let's, if we're going to be accurate, let's tell the whole story and provide that context of why these changes occurred. And not everyone will agree with it. And like you said, Dan.
I've been through this enough times. I can tell you.
Good point because the growth management act was adopted, I think in 1992 and that we, we fell into this whole business and having to, you know, probably define some of these things, but yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't want to miss Adams. I did read that email earlier today too. And I, I'm not sure that I agree with it. And I don't know if we want to discuss that all here or just that it's something to bring up because I feel like that piece of whether anything happens north of I-90 or not is, is going to be affected by the housing, the housing element. And so I don't know that that's appropriate to put something as specific as nothing's going to happen north of I-90. I think that's a, it's, it's almost like a housing suggestion. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm not recalling the details of the memo. I think the, there is a true statement in that the town center and the original town center plan was designed to be a place that would absorb a vast percentage of the growth with the intent that it was going to preserve some level of uh, or lack of development in the surrounding neighborhoods. I think that is a factual statement. Now, whether or not you want to ascribe any future, again, not recalling the details of the memo, like I'm not sure we need to get into any conversation about what's happening specifically on the north side of I-90 in the town center. I think that's less relevant, especially since this is the town center right section. So I think providing context to why in 93, the growth management act was adopted. They built this to concentrate some of that growth that was being prescribed by state and regional authorities, so on and so forth. I mean, those are all contextual things that I think are true and not. and not situated in any sort of politic, right? It's just that was the situation and that at the time was how the city and the council and the commissions responded to all of those pressures.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And, and that's, that's what I was kind of meaning. It was like, yeah, but let's not suggest, but let's definitely articulate the intent of that past intent. I assume of trying to cons, wanting to concentrate most if not all growth within that zoning area.
Great. So we have two suggested, and don't look at the words specifically, but themes that have been added here. Are there any others that you want captured in this? Next draft of this paragraph? Okay, hearing none, I'm like. Yeah. Yep. So I think to the, the meta point, Adam, on that last statement from Victor, I think is just recognizing tone even for the other commentary there. And, and I think it's probably mostly well-formed, but just making sure the tone is more driven by a sort of fact-based recollection of items. I think it's mostly there.
Okay. Great. So we can work on that draft and then I'll make a note in here that when we come back for our tune-up, if, if this is okay with, with the commission, when we come back for the tune-up, we'll just specifically return to this one and make sure that you're okay with that draft. I don't know, you know, the, the land use issues here are providing that context. They're not creating a policy directive. And so the, the wording here, we have some leeway with, but we don't necessarily need to get it specific and precise tonight. I think we can do that when we come back from the tune-up, provided that's acceptable to, to the commission.
Yeah. And I'll just suggest to the commissioners, you know, Victor, for example, if you wanted to just take a stab at throwing some edits to, towards the staff, please feel free to do so, since it's going to come back anyway. Okay, I'm going to move us on from this, uh, item and go to what looks to be policy 12.2, which is on gray box page 69.
Yes. So here, um, when we were looking at this in September, there were, there was a lot of discussion about this policy and there were kind of two main points that I pulled out of that discussion. One was debating whether or not incentivize was the proper direction for this open space policy. And then two, whether that open, this open space policy should encourage or incentivize open space generally or public open space in particular. And then coming out of that discussion, you had, you asked staff to come back with an alternative specifying that this policy is directed at open space. And so we have, uh, the staff proposed alternative here. And then, um, instead of incentivize, uh, the policy would start with encourage, uh, which is a little softer, a little less directive. Kind of given the, um, debate over whether incentivize was the right, um, choice. Encourage is, is pretty broad and it would leave us leeway to eventually establish incentives through development code provisions in the future. So the staff proposed alternative is here on the screen and I'll turn it over to you for comments.
Okay, um, there's a handful of words that have been added here and a couple stricken. Does this sort of meet the intent from the previous conversation? I think, uh, Commissioner Murphy, you and I were the ones that were, uh, debating the, uh, the legality of the term incentivize. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on the changes here or not.
You know, I, I, I'm not sure if there's an, any real difference between column A or column B. So, you know, I, I'm not sure if it, if it meets the objective of trying to make it a little more of a stronger push for creating public space. That would be my comment.
All right, Kate? Oh, sorry. I didn't see their hands up. Did you guys have comments?
I had a question. How are we defining open space?
Um, open space is, um, wasn't expecting that question. So o- open space is like the, um, undeveloped, well, it's still developed because it's, it's park space. Allison, are you on the line? You had, you had pulled that code provision after the last discussion. So you might be more articulate than me off the top of my head.
Sorry, couldn't get off mute there for a second. Um, yeah, so there's a requirement for public plazas and courtyard type things in the town center code. Um, and this public open space refers to those spaces. So they're publicly accessible. They're, they're open, um, but they're not necessarily like parkland or green space. They're just a publicly accessible plaza or courtyard is how I would describe it.
Could it be right away that enables additional street parking?
I don't think so.
Parking would be a, a separate thing from the open space.
Carolyn, did you have something next?
Yeah, I, I, I like the way that in this policy incentives are, are one option for encouraging public open space. So I, I think it came out, um, well here with including that along with development agreements, payment of, um, money to dedicate land, et cetera. So I, I like, I like the way it's worded.
Okay, Kate, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned in hindsight. After the meeting, I was thinking about this, about adding the word public considering we already have the plaza provision. And one of the reasons I'm concerned about this, um, is from an equity standpoint. So renters and multifamily units, um, we've learned recently are cost burdened on housing relative to private homeowners. Renters pay a hundred percent of the property taxes for these buildings. It's a pass-through fee. That's common industry practice. They're paying more property tax per square foot of dwelling space and open space relative to single family homeowners. And given that many apartment dwellers have children, I think they deserve to have some peace of mind, knowing that their children have access to some outdoor space that is semi-private. So I think it's, I, I'm concerned, like I, I understand that, um, you know, we want to have these plazas at courtyards and things, but I think the kids and adults and stuff that live in these buildings deserve to have some private open space. And I'm concerned that adding public there would suggest that the public should be able to go into these courtyards, which I think creates a safety issue for the families that live there, frankly. So I don't know what that public is meant to suggest, or I would just suggest that maybe it's not necessary because we already have those plaza provisions.
So yes, and, so yes and no. So I was on the design commission for three years and we reviewed several of these plans and the, there were a number of elements and I don't know how, how it's, it's been several years. So how exactly it's phrased, but there were a number of, of in, incentives and ways that if you look at, uh, what's the one where Menchies used to be? The 77 Plaza. There's no public space as a part of that facility. There's maybe one in that little breezeway between the old Mo's Pizza and, and where the former Menchies used to be. There's a small little courtyard there. But all of the incentives that they got for the courtyard space were all private. And there's nothing precluding. Then, and then if you look at, what is it? Aviara? They have the area in front of, of Vivian's Bistro there, which would be considered a public plaza, but they also have their private plaza up in the, you know, in the courtyard on the inside. So the language is the incentives should be driven towards the public spaces. You get credit from the city for providing public use, not necessarily for the private use, which previously they could sort of take advantage of.
Yeah. And I just, I just wonder about that idea of taking advantage when you're considering it's open space that, um, you know, it's a public health issue that you have people living in these dense communities and they have no private space. I mean, if, I think most of us live in single family homes, we can walk outside and have, you know, some sense of privacy when we walk outside our houses. So I'm just wondering, I think part of the reason that Aviara and others have more of that public open space is because the details of the code have changed such that they can't have it be exclusively private open space anymore.
But see, I would, but I would argue that both exist in that complex. And at least in the way that this is framed, if they're going to get, if the city is going to contribute to either tax breaks or leniency on the number of stories you can go, that the credit that comes back should be for the public because the city is acting on behalf of the public. They can opt not to take those incentives and privatize their whole thing, but it means they're not going to get the benefit of the public contributing to that public space. I don't disagree with all the points you're making about the added burden to people that live in, especially in, in rental housing based on that. But it comes down to what are the, how is the city using its resources to, to the benefit of the public at large?
Yeah. And my argument is that for open space, you know, that the people who have the worst housing burden cost are going to suffer more by, you know, the developers aren't, it's not like they're gonna say, oh, you know, we're gonna create more of everything. You know, I think it's better if they're creating more of everything. That's great. But I just, I get concerned that we're nickel and diming renters a little bit here. And I just want to make sure that we're not incentivizing developers to limit the amount of open space they create that's semi-private for the families that live in these more crowded conditions. I just wanted to raise that point and my only issue with this statement is adding public. I, I think it's unnecessary.
Okay. Any other thoughts, Carolyn?
I wonder if developers are required to include, you know, open space, private space or, well, open space for their renters. And if they're allowed to double dip when that open space can be offered to the public too. I guess that's what would concern me. In a perfect world, they would be required to provide, you know, activity and play space for the people that live there that's private. And then get incentives from the public to, you know, from the government to, to provide public space. So it is.
So we could probably, we could spend months digging into the depths of all the requirements on multifamily housing. I was on the planet, the design commission for three years and I still know a fraction of what there is to know. So I don't know if we're going to solve that problem here. I think the question here is, um, are we good with the changes? I've heard one comment that they don't like the use of the, the addition, sorry, of public to the o- open space comment. Do I have any other comments either for or against that? And if not, I will take silence as tacit approval and we will move on.
Well, I'm, I'm for saying public because what we're talking about here in this policy is, I think, private developers being given some option that they want for giving back something to the public. So I mean, open space just, you know, just, I don't think cuts it by itself, but.
Okay, Victor?
So I've got, I've got a quick comment to you and then to you as well. So to you, I agree. We're kind of getting into a town center redevelopment plan and we're dangerously close to falling down a slippery slope. I agree with, with what Carolyn said. I think we've lost the context on this, which is, the agreements for open space are in exchange for something. And so in exchange for an extra story or something else, they give something back to the public is what the original intent of this is. And so, I agree with keeping the intent there, but I'm also very conscious to the slippery slope that we are on right now.
Okay, so, um, hearing no, is there consensus to move forward with the language as it's been presented? I have three, four, five. Great. Okay, we have consensus there. Knowing that more debate can happen.
Okay, so the next, uh, the next issue here is policy 15.3. So when we were looking at this, um, in September, um, you asked staff to, um, just clean up the, the wording on this policy, um, not necessarily amend the, the, the statement of the policy, but just make it a little more clear what it's saying. Um, and so the staff proposed alternative, um, just more clearly lays out that we're going to confine, um, low-rise apartments, condos, duplex and triplex designs to those areas already zoned to allow multifamily housing. One of the, one of the points, one of the notes that I make in the memo that I think is worth, uh, reiterating here is that whatever we land on tonight, uh, for this policy is going to be subject to that additional work we do about, around housing. So this is a bit of a moving target, um, because this is talking about how we're going to regulate specific kinds of housing. So all that is to say, I suppose that, the finer detail may, may come up later and we, we may not need to spend a ton of time on this tonight because we've got, housing in general is going to be a much bigger discussion we have later in this process. But at, at that point, I'll, I'll turn it over to, um, the commission for comments or direction.
Any comments, Kate? Oh, sorry.
So I'm, I'm unclear as to what we're trying to solve here. I'm looking at the language and it says confined low-rise apartments, condos and duplex, triplex designs to those areas already zoned to allow multifamily housing. That's, that's what zoning is for, right? I can't, I can't build an apartment in an area that's not a lot, that doesn't allow for multifamily housing.
I, I think the, the intent behind the original policy and what we're trying to get at here is that those, those places are, are these specific types of housing. So apartments, condos and duplex and triplex, we want to keep those in our multifamily zones. That's what I mean.
But I'm, I'm, I come back to, you have to by design because that's what a zone is for.
Right. But some of those uses you may be able to, uh, or you may amend zoning to allow those things. And this is providing that direction that we don't, we want to keep those only in those multifamily zones.
So the, the, uh, the better way to answer it, Victor, is without the policy, in theory, the council could go in and say in the R9.6, R9.6 zone, they were going to allow up to five unit dwellings to exist. With a policy in place like this, it would preclude them from doing that without going through a process of amending the comp plan to actually say that we want to allow that to happen.
So shouldn't we say something like we're not going to expand the zones beyond where they currently are? Isn't that what we're saying? We're not, we're not going to expand the zones.
Well, I mean, that's the way I read this, which is to the areas that are already zoned to allow that. I mean, this is just, to me, the, this policy already existed. It was just very poorly worded because it conflated the commercial and office zones and, um,
Understood, understood. It just, I'm not sure that this is any. Understood, understood. It just, I'm not sure that this is any better worded.
It's shorter. I'm all about shorter, Kate.
Yeah, I was just gonna propose that we table this because the housing element is very likely to impact it. And I don't think wordsmithing this is a good use of time. Personally, I would just leave the existing language as is until we get further direction. Especially if it becomes a debate about what the change language is. Cause it's
I was leaning that direction, but let me get comments from everybody, and then I think that's the direction we'll go. Go ahead, Adam.
I, I think the history on, on this comment was, I think in the original, the first time we saw this, or I saw this, we have this with the addition of the commercial office zone. So I kind of read that as, well, maybe that was added last time we revisited it. So let's make this, you know, more current, not because this implies that we've recently added this commercial office zone. And I think especially if we are going to be, you know, revisiting this and looking at the intent of it, let's shorten it, let's clarify it, let's remove that, that distraction of the commercial office zone. So I, I like the staff proposed alternative text. It's clearer, more to the point. And gets rid of the fact that, or gets rid of text that implies we've recently added this commercial office zone.
Let me go to Commissioner Murphy and then I'll come back to you, Carolyn.
Yeah, I agree with Kate and you, Dan. This is something that is out of our control. And we're wasting our time by wordsmithing this at this point.
Yeah, we could make either decision and frankly, it's not going to matter because we're gonna end up talking about this again before it goes to public. Anyway, so flip a coin, Adam, choose whichever language you want. And then we'll talk about it again in a couple of months when we have to.
Yeah, so, so maybe saying that we're gonna table discussion of this until we get to the housing, I think is a, a clear way of, I, I could flip a coin, but I think it's
I meant that as a joke clearly, but for the sake of the public that may not understand my humor, I would suggest if, if there's consensus that we just table the discussion around this policy until a time when it's more relevant. Or is that in favor? No, was that
I told you, I, I have my hand up for some time. So are, are you
Oh, my apologies. Go ahead.
So, um, you know, in terms of wasting time, I mean, time has already been spent on this. We raised the question before as to the lack of clarity in this policy. And now the staff has written it in such a way that it's exceedingly clear. So, I mean, I think that we should go ahead and clean up the language because they both mean the same thing. But one of them, you can understand it when you read it. The other one, you can't understand it when you read it. So my thought would be, let's change the language. But of course, we know that this matter is tabled because there's other issues coming. So I, I would, I would suggest, yeah, let's go ahead and make this change and then deal with the rest later.
We have both of these written in word next to each other as I see on the screen. We're not gonna lose any work. We've got it and I've heard several people say that they just want to table this until for any further discussion. So do I have consensus to just move on to table? That's what I'm asking for right now. To table the discussion on this until the staff comes back. Do I have consensus to table the, okay, one, two, three, four, five. Great.
Okay, so the next, the next issue before us is a policy sixteen point seven, which is focused on regulatory barriers and preserving older homes. There was some concern here that the regulations may inadvertently create incentives for demolish, or demolition and replacement of, of older homes. And when we looked at this in September, you asked staff to kind of come back with this draft. And so we're proposing two, two policies, kind of splitting this out into two different policies. One is to ensure development regulations allow the improvement of existing homes and do not create incentives to remove or replace existing homes. And then the second is to evaluate locally adopted building and fire code regulations to ensure they encourage the preservation of existing homes. So the second one, the sixteen point eight came out of that discussion where we were talking about there, there are some limitations in how you may be able to remodel your home that would make it essentially create an incentive to demo and rebuild that home. So we want to have some policy direction kind of pointed at those, those two things.
We'll start down here. Adam, do you have any on this? No is an okay answer.
I mean, it seems reasonable. I think we have goals of preserving existing housing stock, residential character. So let's, let's clarify it. Yeah.
Okay, Kate, anything else to add?
I think it's good as written. This is played, I've heard from a lot of residents, and I think this maybe starts to address that.
Okay, Carolyn?
Yeah, I, I think that the first one, sixteen point seven is, is very good. I'm not so much in favor of sixteen point eight because evaluating, say, for example, the fire code regulations to ensure, that's a pretty strong word, that they encourage the preservation of existing homes. Those types of codes are constantly updated for reasons of, of, of life safety and protection of structures. And for us to presume that we could evaluate them and ensure that they encourage the preservation of existing homes, I think is, is something we really shouldn't wander into. Even building codes, same thing. I, I, so I think your, your first statement is, is pretty safe, but I think sixteen point eight is too high of a bar.
If I can provide a little background that might be helpful. So sixteen point eight probably wouldn't come back to the planning commission. That evaluation would happen through a different process since the planning commission is really only focused on the development code. But there are provisions in the, in local jurisdictions have some discretion in the provisions of the building and fire code regulations that they locally adopt. And so the, that policy would really be directed at, as we're evaluating those local choices about those things, that we make sure that we're, we're taking a look at those and whether or not they're creating a, an incentive or a disincentive, as it were.
Well, perhaps using, yeah, go ahead.
So there's, there's, there is some local discretion with those. It's a, it's a pretty complicated process. It's, it's not really in my wheelhouse, but our building official could look at it and we could look at that with the council.
Thanks, that helps. And, and I think maybe just the one word that might be of concern then would be to ensure that they encourage the preservation. I think that's too strong.
Victor, do you have any comments?
I'm good with this. And this, this is both. It's not an either or, right? On these six, sixteen, seven and sixteen, eight go together. It's not
I mean, they, they
between the two.
Correct. They, they do go together, but I mean, if to Carolyn's point, you know, if you have a disagreement with one, it doesn't have to okay, preclude the other. Commissioner Murphy or Commissioner Curry, do either of you have any additional comments? Commissioner Curry, go ahead.
No, I was giving thumbs up. I'm good to go.
Oh, okay. Sorry, you're a tiny little box on the screen. I, I'll just add, I have the same, Adam, the same comment as Carolyn here actually. And I think I was one that made some of the point around this. I'm not sure it's about ensuring that they encourage preservation, but they don't unintentionally create situations where preserving existing homes becomes possible or feasible. That's really the more so that's, yeah. Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, they do not unintentionally discourage the preservation of, of existing homes. Yeah, I think that's, that's more to the intent of at least my comments from last time. And I think get to Carolyn's point of being too strenuous in the other.
Word plays, um, that's a double negative. Actually, it may be a triple, that may be a triple negative.
Triple negative.
It's to ensure they encourage the preservation of existing homes.
See, there's where I can't go with that. To ensure that they do something is where I'm
Ensure, ensuring they do or they do not is the, it's, it's the same severity on either side.
It's the unintentionally word that makes the difference. Unintentionally, yeah, okay. I don't know, but I think we kind of.
Evaluate locally. Adam, sorry, go ahead.
I've got a suggestion. Evaluate locally adopted building and fire code regulations within existing discretion to encourage the preservation of existing homes.
Okay.
Because we, we don't know the unintended consequences of codes or laws, right? Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, he was still, um,
We encourage, we take the ensure word out, right?
Yeah, I would take ensure out, just to encourage.
The preservation, there you go.
Great. Kate, you got another comment?
I don't know if I want to make it. I think this is fine.
Okay. Okay, so with that, do I have consensus on both of these sixteen point seven or sixteen point eight as revised? Great, I see at least five hands. Commissioner Murphy, did you have a comment or was that just a consensus vote? Great. Okay, Adam?
Cool. So the next policy is, or the next issue is policy seventeen point four. So when we first put out the, when we released the first draft for comment, we received a public comment proposing amendment to seventeen point four. And the planning commission considered that at the, the September meeting and generally liked the parts of the comment, but asked staff to provide some clarification in the policy. And so as I was looking at the, the public comment and the comments from the planning commission, I put together this, this alternative for seventeen point four. Really, the, the difference between the existing policy and this, this proposed alternative doesn't really change much of the effect of the policy. Really, the, the main change here is that we, we changed this to talk about the social and recreational club facilities rather than the clubs themselves. Because this is a land use element, it really should be talking about like land uses rather than organizations in the community. And so it, that was the primary change made here. And then also the inclusion of the word modernized here in the second sentence. There was, we did receive two public comments about this policy earlier today. So hopefully you saw that in your inbox there. The, the public comments, one, one comment was essentially saying that we shouldn't change. That we should just stick with the existing policy seventeen point four. And then one of the other comments proposed some, some additional changes to seventeen point four, but I don't have those handy yet. So we could, we could table this one and consider those comments at a later time. Or if you're ready to go, we can, we can work those in here now.
Well, any discussion and decision we make doesn't preclude us from further considering the public comment. So I'll make that
Correct.
Statement. So why don't I, why don't I start on the phone? Hello, caller. Do either of you, Commissioner Curry or Commissioner Murphy have a, any thoughts or comments on the proposed changes from the staff here?
Didn't we have a question on what the word modernized meant?
Uh, that was part of the discussion is what, what does modernize mean? I think now that this policy is directed at facilities rather than clubs, it makes a lot, or rather than the organizations themselves. I think that makes a little more sense. Modernizing a facility would be like replacing your HVAC to a more efficient model or something like that.
Bringing it up to code.
Or expanding its footprint.
But usually that would, that would be expansion, that would be called out as expansion if you were going that far. Or modernize is not that general to where it would include like expansion. Yeah, expansion is a, is a different thing that we would call out. Especially given the, the other words are maintain, renovate, those kind of more narrow terms.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure what's meant by support the need. It seems like it should be something like should recognize the need and support the ability to do those things.
Okay. Let's capture that and then looks like Victor has a comment.
Yeah, so part of the feedback from the last time we discussed this was the proposal was more directive or prescriptive and it used the word shall rather than should. I see that we've returned should, but it still feels like this is incrementally more prescriptive because it should, you've actually stricken some of this, but as written, it was should recog-
It should be recognize the need and support the ability.
So recognize, so should recog-, should recognize the need seems to me a stronger statement than should reflect the desire. And so I remain supportive of the original language and I, I think we're getting out of, out of the scope of the exercise. This is, this is kind of in the, in the realm of town center.
So sorry, by original language, you mean the original language is proposed?
Policy seventeen point four on the screen.
Okay. Carolyn, do you have a commentary? You're still formulating. You want me to come back to you? Okay, Adam? Kate, Kate's hedging, so Kate, your turn, go.
Yeah, I think this was submitted by a community member. And it was because the word desire didn't make sense. It's not a desire. There is a need to maintain and renovate and modernize over time. Buildings, you know, might have a twenty, thirty, fifty year lifecycle. So I think it's appropriate to replace desire with need. And I respect the concerns of other commissioners that you know, they're concerned about overreach, but I think Adam has, you know, getting into expansion, I think Adam's addressed that. I don't know why we need modernize and renovate, but that's, I don't, I'm not too worried about that. I like it as, as written with that minor edit.
As a reformed PR person, I would probably spend days telling you what I think the differences between those two words are. As I'm sure those members of the community that would as well. I, I, I actually like the, the addition of the language of recognize the need versus what, how was it originally?
It was support originally.
Yeah, support the need. So I like recognize better than support and, and personally, I would actually remove the support the ability. I would just say regulations should just recognize the need to maintain, update and renovate these facilities. Modernized to me, an update are, like, that's to me, the layman way of saying it is to update. And so, you know, in that sense, to me, that really gets to, I think, both concerns here, which are updating the language to make it more specific to, you know, the facility side of this based on commentary, but also recognizing the, the support language is very, is potentially stronger than just saying, hey, there's a need to maintain, update and renovate these facilities. And that's very different than Um, and that's very different than expand, grow, et cetera, which a lot of the commentary that has, um, come both previously and through this is worried that this is expanding the scope of, so that's just my thought. Um, I'll go to Adam and then come back to Carolyn.
I, I like your suggestion of recognize and update. I think those are good words to replace, uh, what support and modernize. Um, was wondering if we, we should also discuss the, you know, the, the public comment we got on this already or for later, but I think, yeah, first point is, yeah, I like recognize and update and.
I mean, do you have a comment about the public comment or what's?
I, I, I don't know enough about it. That's why I was hoping, uh, more experienced people would discuss it so I can listen.
Let me get to Carolyn and then I'll see which part of that you want.
So I'm, I'm wondering what is the purpose of this policy if, if we only said that we recognize the need to do something? What does that do for these facilities? What? So, um, by contrast, if we don't bother to say recognize the need, which I suspect might not actually accomplish anything concrete, um, to me, support the ability might be the more useful phrase, but so that's a question, um, maybe didn't sound like one, but what, what is the value of saying support the need? What does that, what does that do for these entities on Mercer Island?
So I think the, this, this type of policy gives us direction. So when we're amending our development code, we know kind of the intent and that, again, that direction of, of what, where are we going to go when we're amending that code? So this should, this provides us some guidance about that. Um, I mean, the semantic difference between recognize or support, I think are uh, maybe negligible really when we're thinking about it as a direction because it says should, that's a, that's again, that's more of a directive thing than a, than a mandated thing. Um, and so that, where this comes out is again, just in that direction as we're, um, updating our development code in the future. Uh, but this, this also doesn't create a mandate that we update our development code today.
Okay, I think we might've missed each other there a little bit, but I'm, I'm good with the should word. It's just that recognize the need versus support the ability. When you just recognize the need, that's like, oh, they have a need. But what does the city need to do in regard to that need? We need to support their ability to, you know, modernize or renovate or whatever that might be.
And, and that I would defer to the commission's, uh,
Uh huh.
Consideration.
So my, my input here would be that we should support the ability um, to whatever those words are going to be, I guess that's optional. And I like the fact that you changed the policy directed towards the facilities instead of the groups. So that was, that was an improvement.
Did you have something else, Victor?
I did.
Go ahead.
So I wanted to go back to something you said, Adam, which is, um, you said that this provides direction to the staff in terms of the code that's being developed. So can you explain to me the difference between the direction that the existing policy gives versus the alternative? And kind of what would the difference be in terms of staff direction on this?
Sure, well, I mean, I think that's where the difference between directing this at the, the organizations uh, is maybe not very helpful because reading the existing policy, what that's telling us is that, um, that we need to, through our development regulation, um, recognize these organizations as community assets. Um, and so instead, really our development regulations have nothing to do with organization or have very little to do with organizations. They have to do with the facilities that those organizations are using. So that's, that's thing one, yeah, that, that's probably the major difference between these two.
Understood, but back to the question, kind of what's, what's the, what's the difference in the direction?
Uh, there isn't a, there really isn't that significant of a difference between the two, um, other than that difference that I just pointed out. Um, so the.
But neither one of these. Practical, what's the practical implication of that difference?
Um, so the practical implication is that when we're looking at the development regulations for facilities, so those bulk heights, um, other things, other, other dimensional standards, um, other things that talk about facilities, we now have a, a policy that specifically addresses those facilities rather than the organizations. That's the, that's the practical difference between the two. They, there isn't, they're not very substantially different other than that point that I just made.
Uh, Commissioner Curry and then Commissioner Murphy.
Um, so before we go any really further, should we address what the public comments were? Cause we've kind of got one that says, why are we even doing this? This is out of scope. And then we've got one that says, hey, we should be rewarded for conditional use permits or some of that effect, right? So should we take those into account now before we get further into this discussion and kind of toss that around or when, when do we want to do that?
So, uh, what's your question? You want the history behind why those comments were being made or?
Well, we've got public commentary on this and so I want to make sure that we address public commentary. And it's EA or NA, I guess, I don't know. Again, new guy, right? Um, I don't, I don't know that a history lesson, maybe it could be. Uh, but I think we should address the concerns that were sent to the planning commission around this line item.
So I'm going to give you my editorialized version because I lived through it. Carolyn was here for a portion of that as well, so I, I will, um, yeah, all of it, it went on for so long, I, I don't know where people came in. Um, so I'm not going to speak to intent or anything from the comments themselves. I'm just going to give you my interpretation of sort of what led to where we're at with and why this topic around these facilities is a bit of a lightning rod. There was a, um, an organization on the island that came forward, uh, several years ago, um, with a plan that they wanted to implement to expand and, um, and update a portion of their, um, their facility, relocate some buildings and, and, um, in, in the name of expanding their, their membership and the services that they could provide. Um, through a long series of, um, over the course of what, two years, Carolyn, I think we spent maybe a year and a half, a year and a half. Uh, we went through a process where we as a commission were looking at. So these facilities, for the most part, are all located in residential zones with the exception of a few on the north end here, which are actually overlapping a series of multiple zones. Um, so the view was in order to build some consistency because the regulations that dictate what they could do on each piece of property were slightly different. There was a proposal to create a new zone for community organizations. The view of the public and ultimately of the council, uh, was that the, um, the areas that were in residential zones have to abide by certain residential, um, building standards. Even though through a conditional use permit, that's where the language was introduced in the commentary. Um, makes it possible for these to exist under a conditional use. It was the view that, um, by creating a new zone, creating a new set of standards was basically enabling the growth, um, in the expansion of these facilities in residential neighborhoods that was deemed um, incongruent with the character of residential neighborhoods. And that is me summarizing in two minutes, a year and a half worth of work and thousands of hours of conversation um, that I recall only portions of because it was, um, uh, it was so long. So I don't know, Carolyn, you want to add anything more to that? To me, those are the salient points that get to my belief from the commentary is, or from the, the way that I read the comments from the public that we received is they're concerned that the changing of this language is opening that Pandora's box again and asking us to consider, um, looking at this in a different way, so.
Well, I think your, um, description of the community facility zone project is remarkable. Well done, well done. How'd you, how did you put that all into so many cogent sentences? Uh, I don't have anything to add to your description of, of how that happened. Uh, one comment I would like to offer is that, you know, when we get comments from the public, um, you know, sometimes it's two comments, sometimes it's thirty comments before a meeting. And I think any one of us commissioners, if, if there's something in one of those comments that causes us to want to raise an issue that that person who made the comment, uh, then, you know, then we bring it forward, but, um, you know, uh, so I guess I would maybe Michael Cur- Mr. Curry has a, Commissioner Curry has a particular thing about those comments that you want to ask the committee to address or the commission to address. I, I would wonder what that would be.
My only thing, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Murphy, would you want to add, you want to speak before I trip over my feet again or whatever?
No, no, let's finish with your, your comments.
No, I, I mean, we constantly say we want public feedback in the things that we're doing to help shape the policy that we're trying, that we're trying to put forth, that's good for all islanders, right? But, but to this point, we hadn't yet spoken about any of it. Like I said, we've got one that says, what we're doing here is kind of out of scope and should be incorporated into part of something else. And then we've got some wording which says, hey, and, uh, uh, that, you know, we should have this as part of conditional youth permits, so. But I, I don't know enough about it. I just want to make sure that we're addressing those concerns, right? As we get into this, so that either way, we're, we're showing islanders that we hear them, right? So that, that's my concern.
And, and if I could, if I could jump in here, um, because I think the scope question is a good one. It's also a good opportunity to kind of touch on this, um, because it's probably going to come up a few more times as we work through the comp plan update. So the scope of work is really narrowly defined for most of the comprehensive plan update. You know, we're, we're trying to keep this really focused on what the state law requires us to do. Um, the, the direction that we received from the council, um, in setting that scope is really to keep that, um, that reined in as we go through the process. On the other hand, we received this public comment, um, and the, the planning commission, e- even though the scope doesn't say look at policy seventeen point four, because we received that comment, the planning commission can consider that comment and consider making changes based on that comment. Um, if that, if that were to create like a new policy directive that would be really expanding what the comprehensive plan is telling the city to do or committing additional city resources, um, then we want to check in with the scope and say, well, that's, that's really beyond what the scope, um, was set for this project. Um, whereas if it's, if it's something that's a, a relatively minor changing to some of the wording of the policies, that's not necessarily an expansion of the scope of the comprehensive plan update. So I hope that kind of clarifies that scope question. So if it was, you know, if this policy was really saying create a new zone or something like that, that would be a significant work product, then that's probably outside of the scope, but because this is a relatively minor change in, in the wording to a policy, it's, it's not necessarily scope creep for this project.
Uh, Commissioner Murphy, and then I'll come back to, uh, the dais.
Yeah, I'd go back to Carolyn's point, which is based on my original suggestion, and that is that, um, clarifying the language here, um, recognizing the need should be married to something that says, um, supporting the ability or allowing or, you know, whatever, and what the council does with that, uh, if, if they do anything with code or not, but I don't think that that language would either necessitate a new code provision or rezoning or anything like that. But it would just facilitate doing presumably what they could be allowed to do under the existing regime. But I think saying recognizing the need is, is like going to a doctor and having him say, well, you got a problem and, and not explaining either what it is or, you know, what he's going to do about it. So I would, I think that the concepts go together and, and should be in there if it's, if the policy is going to have any meaning.
Okay, I'm going to go to Kate and then Adam and then Victor.
Um, yeah, I did also read the public comment and I think it's so detailed that it does, it's outside of the scope because it's talking about, um, really just a brand new policy of, um, applying conditional use permits and things like that. I think that's a more expansive, that maybe would be more of a docket item. Um, and I think I would be happy with recognize the need or recognability. And the reason I say that is because it says development regulation should recognize the need. And to me, that does support the ability, the way it's written. So I think if we're sort of like not wanting to, we're trying to have an even keel about responding to the public comments. Um, I think the word support is turning off some members here. Um, but I'm happy either way.
Kate, Adam?
Oh, I guess I, I appreciate the history lesson. I'm, I'm reasonably new here, so to, to the island, so I wasn't fully aware of that apparent, I guess, that intent to not, or decision to not allow like expansion. So maybe should, is there value in clarifying that? Like I'm, I'm still on board with recognize up and update and maybe clarify just not, not expansion, not expand to kind of keep, you know, articulate to those who may not know as much of the history here that that decision, I guess, was made over the course of a year and a half or two years and you know, we're not trying to go there again, uh, by revising this.
Uh, I, I'll make the statement that I don't think that was actually the conclusion is that there's not support for ever letting these groups expand in any way. It was the mechanism by which, uh, was being, um, referenced to allow that to happen.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Um, that would be my caveat to that, so. Uh, Victor?
So, uh, I continue to prefer the existing policy. Um, I could get behind the proposed alternative if we added language somewhere in that second sentence that said, within the scope or as allowed by the current residential code. So development regulation should recognize, oh, I don't know, should recognize the ability or the need to maintain, update and renovate social, recreational, educational and religious facilities as allowed by the current residential code.
One tick, I just want to make sure, I want to see what he puts here. Okay.
I see.
Um, go ahead, Carolyn.
Well, some of these facilities are not in residential zones, so I think that would be a little bit too limiting.
But it says located in single family residential areas of the island.
Uh, let's see, okay, excuse me, let me, let me read this. Predominantly, yeah, except for like my recollection of this experience we had with the community facility zone is they were located in several zones, but, okay, if this is, this is primarily talking about those in single family residential areas in the island. I guess my, my thought about this at this point would be if that the, the proposed staff proposed alternative i- is pretty good and it's, it's quite benign. I don't think it changes really much between the existing and the proposed, other than it directs all of this at facilities instead of at organizations. And if people feel uncomfortable with the notion of supporting the ability, I mean, I could go with recognize the need or support the need, I mean, that, that's good, but I do think the new one is more clear and, um, better than the old one.
If I can offer.
If I can offer, excuse me, turn my microphone on. So if I can offer, uh, one edit to what you've, um, suggested, Victor, which is instead of residential development code, we just say land use code. Cause then that covers like all the existing code as it exists today, um, both residential and, um, like the office code that these um, operate under. That would be the only thing that I would say would just, to make it clearer since there is sort of a mix of. But I defer to your, um, one sec. Since I'm proposing the change to what you suggested.
Gumbo, it's everyone's, it's everyone's changes. I, I, I prefer to keep it as resident because I, I feel like the issue that you spoke about, this is calling it out more, you know, predominantly located in single family residential areas. The issue was this was an issue in the residential maybe of, or the people who have residences there. So this is residential code specific.
Okay. All right. Go ahead and, um, Ctrl Z that, Adam, and then, uh, I'll go to Kate.
Yes. I, I respect the intent, but I think it's not a necessary statement because it's self evident.
Can we leave it alone?
Things aren't going to be allowed to be done that aren't allowed by code. So I don't understand that the need of having that in there. Um, I was a little bit concerned about the word current as well. I think I have issues with current and residential just because not all of these facilities are in residential. I respect that. Yes, the issue here that we're dickering about was residential, um, but not every facility. So I liked your proposed amendment, Chair Hubble. But I think any sentence here is, you know, of, of course it's going to relate to code. Cause it's code.
Can, can I propose a couple of, not, not changes here, but just some things that'll help me get some direction. Um, it would be helpful, I think, if we resolved this recognize, support the ability, the need, support. If we could kind of get through this part that I've just highlighted and, and get that ironed out. And then we can, then we can move to the second part. I've got it typed out here so we can come back to it. But it would help me to get this first part, and I think it would help the rest of us too to get, get that part ironed out first. If I may be so bold.
All right. Who wants to start? We'll do one round and go ahead, Carolyn.
I, I will just start it out by saying recognize the need and support the ability to.
Okay. So that would, that would drop this out and just be recognize the need and support the ability to maintain update, et cetera.
Okay. I think as soon as we get consensus. So let me, let me ask this. That was the proposal. Is there consensus that at least at this point, we can move forward. Mike, is that a consensus? Yes. Or is that a, okay? Now let me see a thumbs up. How many people are okay? Just that, for just that first statement, recognize the need and support the ability. Okay, we have consensus on that.
Great. And, and now before we get to this last part, there was also a proposal to maybe, uh, change modernized to update, um, to make it more plain spoken.
Okay, is there consensus on that?
I prefer modernized, but I could go along.
I think functionally the, Adam, would you consider them functionally the same?
I believe they're synonyms. Yes.
Okay. I, it was my suggestion. So I'll do that. I've got a thumbs up from Commissioner Curry and from Commissioner Murphy. Okay.
Um, all right. And so then the, the final clause here, we, we still need to, um, iron out here is the current residential code, residential development code or as proposed. Um, it could be land use code instead. Um, land use code would be more broad, um, but it would be factually true as Commissioner Hughes pointed out. You know, the, any development has to be allowed under the development code, um, at the time that it's permitted.
Carolyn?
I, I go along with Kate on that. To not add the reference to the development code is just simplicity is, is very valuable in these types of documents. And when you cannot gum it up with extra stuff that doesn't actually say anything, I think you're better off.
You're right. Did you online? Did you guys hear Carolyn?
I didn't have my, my gun. I could repeat if you need me to.
I, I heard what she said. I was able to hear. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. And, and respectfully, I would disagree. I think if we can get fairly targeted, almost surgical with it, I think it takes any ambiguity out of the sentence and out of the statement that we're trying to make. And regardless of how you update residential code in the future, as long as we stays, as long as we work within that current code, there should be no problem. Code being code.
Yeah, that's the issue that Kate pointed out though, Michael, that current now or current then.
Shouldn't matter, right?
Yeah, but the words do matter.
I, I suppose to, to that point, if that's where the, if we change it to land use code, that's general enough and specific enough to where we're not painted into a corner by saying current and residential. But it's specific enough because it's the land use code and, and that would, you know, that would be the thing that applies there.
All right, Kate.
I, there might be a compromise here, which would be to use the word, uh, contemporary, or is that just a synonym? Cause current seems more specific to me. Like if I see current, I'm thinking the date the document's written.
And, uh, which is irrelevant here. It'll always go by whatever the, the code is that's, that is um, active at the time of whenever anything happens.
So can we just vote between, is it, is it possible to just say who wants, um, land use code and who wants presidential development code?
Uh, all right. Well, unless there's a whole lot of other debate and given that it's ten o'clock, I would move to, is there consensus on the language as currently presented, which reads as allowed by current residential development code? Is our consensus to move forward with that language? Who's in favor? I've got two, three. Okay. And then the other, uh, was land use. As allowed by land use code.
The land use code.
Yeah. Do we need a the in there, Adam, or is that? Or does it matter?
Um, I, I don't know that it matters, but.
Yeah, well, you guys can fix the grammar.
Yeah, this looks good.
Okay. So, um, how many people will be in favor of this language? I have one, two, three, four. All right. So we'll go with that and we'll get public comment on it and see where it goes.
Great. All right. Moving to goal seventeen, um, I think this one might be a little simpler. Um, so when we looked at this in September, um, you asked staff to, um, simplify the sentence structure. Um, is the, the existing goal seventeen was, um, uh, confusing sentence. And so we, uh, prepared the staff alternative. Uh, commercial designations and permitted uses under current zoning will not change with the exception of allowing residential development in mixed use zones. It's a, a little more clearer, I think, than the previous draft.
Hopefully this is not contentious. Do I have four people that are okay with the changes presented? All right. I have at least four, five, six. Great. Okay.
All right.
One easy one. Good.
Yes. Um, so that's the last lingering issue, um, as, as outlined in the memo. Um, if there's, um, again, we'll, we'll be coming back for a tune up, um, later in this process. So this isn't the final, final draft, um, but it will be the public review draft. Um, so we'll, we'll have more opportunities in the future.
Um, and before you go, Adam, I know there were a couple of other items that folks wanted to bring up as well. So, um, let me start with Victor because he came to me first and then we'll go around.
Um, so I was a little confused and, and this go, this was actually called out in the, in one of the public comments. Um, I think it's gray box fifty eight. Last paragraph. We say that we are designated as a high capacity transit community. When did that designation, designation take place?
Uh, okay. Uh, so high capacity transit community is something that we are designated that, uh, in the PSRC Vision twenty fifty, um, regional plan.
And what's, what's the data, what's the date on that doc?
Um, that document was, I don't know the exact date, but it was adopted in twenty twenty one. Then further on that, uh, in the King County countywide planning policies, the city is designated as a high capacity transit, um, community there as well. And, and all that designation really means is that for the purpose of that regional plan and the countywide planning policies, um, the city has access to high capacity transit. And that's, uh, we're categorized as such because we have a park and ride and, uh, light rail station. Uh, we're served by light rail.
Yeah. So I, I have a little bit of heartburn over that one because I exchanged a number of emails prior to my being on the planning commission with our previous CPD director, who insisted that we were a residential community and pointed out that that's identified in twelve or thirteen instances in the comp plan. So which is it? And are we going to go and change all those instances? And I'm, and I'm happy to provide my old email and, and for the record. If you want.
No, I think that the, it would be a mistake to think that high capacity transit is incompatible with being a residential community too. We can, we can be both of those things. High capacity transit community means that we are a city that has access to high capacity transit service through um, light rail and, um, bus service. That doesn't mean that we're not also a residential community.
So where can I find a definition of a high capacity transit community?
In the Vision twenty fifty, uh, PSRC plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Was that all you had, Victor? Adam?
Um, perhaps it might be worth articulating where that name came from. I think I had a lot of general comments. Um, just saying like, where did this come from? I think that's good info for people to know, um, that, you know, planning commission or city council did not designate us, um, high capacity transit city. I think we should say, we should point out this came as pointed out in Vision twenty fifty. And perhaps we can say in Vision twenty forty, uh, we used to be characterized as a larger city. You know, let's, let's, once again, we're talking about layman, right? I'm, I don't know the, the past twenty years of history here. Um, so it'd be good to know the context of that.
For, for what it's worth, it says Mercer Island is designated as a high capacity transit community in the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision twenty fifty.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's the exact sentence.
Yeah, I, I didn't have the actual text there, but yeah, like, I think, okay, fair enough. Um, yeah, okay. Hold, hold Doug.
Yeah, go, read, read the last paragraph of, um, gray box fifty eight. And there's even a further sentence there that says this designation recognizes the importance of localities with high capacity, high capacity transit service as a place to focus new development due to the excellent access to employment centers, educational institutions and other opportunities. And so, you know, certainly there can be, uh, and I know there is debate in the community around what, um, focus on new development means. So I'm not gonna get into that debate, but that's, if there's any language there, that's the one that probably should be discussed more than the definition around how someone else designates us. Um, Carolyn, I, did you have a commenter question or something else you wanted to bring up?
Yeah. Um, okay. So this concerns goal number two. And, um, the town center land use policies. In our previous meeting, I pointed out that the either the existing, must be the existing policy. At this time, I don't seem to have that in front of me. Made it sound like we were indeed preserving um, existing commercial square footage in the town center. But the regulation that the council recently adopted doesn't preserve the existing quantity of commercial square footage in the town center. And, um, the planning director came into our meeting and verified that that was correct. And we were promised that we would see some policy that more correctly described what the code recently adopted um, actually does. So I see under goal two that you have two, two point two. So don't we need to discuss which one you're gonna? You're proposing or it's on page sixty five? Um, so I'm a little confused if they're both supposed to be there or just one of them.
Um, I believe I didn't delete the old one. And replace it with that, that second one there that begins with establish.
The second one seems correct, but the one above it doesn't seem correct.
Yeah, that is a typo on my part.
Okay. All right. Well, that.
Good catch.
Yeah.
How it's gonna run that one to the ground.
We like scrivener's errors.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, uh, last, uh, discussion items related to the land use element before we adjourn that? It is now ten o'clock. We have two more items on the agenda that we can hopefully get through quickly. So, um, hearing nothing else related to the land use element. Thank you, um, Mr. Adam.
Thanks, guys. Yeah.
Uh, with that, let's move to item number four, which was consideration of an accessory amendment to the, uh, well, let me ask this. It's ten o'clock. Do you guys want to blast through this or do you need another break? Blast.
We're all almost done.
Fire away. Okay. Uh, item number four, consideration of an accessory amendment. Uh, sorry, an accessory recommendation to accompany the docket recommendation that we discussed, uh, last week. Hello, Allison. Welcome.
Hi, um, I was gonna suggest that Commissioner Boatsman speaks to her recommended language, but I do have it available if we want to pull it up on the screen.
Um, and I believe this is, uh, page gray box eighty six in the packet for those looking or playing the home game.
Yeah. And Carolyn sent me a version with a couple of fairly minor revisions earlier today. So that's what I'm pulling up on the screen. Um, it has those changes in red line.
Thank you.
Okay, Carolyn, would you like to talk to your, um,
Sure, sure. Um, okay. So the purpose of this letter is to follow up our docket process and make some recommendations to the council to examine certain aspects of the process with the idea of making some improvements and clarifications. So, um, um, I've started by explaining, I don't know, did people get a chance to read the letter or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So I, in general, explain the difference between the, um, commission's role and the council's role and how the existing code makes some feeble attempts to clarify what those two roles are. Um, and then I've made a more, um, included a more specific list of various aspects of the code that are confusing. And then summarized, um, by saying that the comprehensive plan, the code are rather different tools. They're related, but they both implement city government in a different way. Only the comp plan amendments are governed by the GMA and the countywide planning policies. So, um, it So it may, may make sense to have separate code sections directing how the docket is created for the comp plan and the code because the requirement to docket comp plan items comes from the Growth Management Act. So that's a separate body of code. And also I pointed out some areas in which the existing criteria that the city council uses are somewhat perhaps needlessly discouraging to the public in terms of bringing docket forward, docket proposals forward that are adopted. So anyway, that's just a, you know, high level summary of what, what I wrote, but I mean, be interested in your feedback.
Okay. Allison, would you mind hitting in the lower right corner of the little plus button? We can't read the it's on the big screen. So just zoom in a little bit on that to see.
How's that?
That's perfect. I will at least, it is for me. I shouldn't speak to everybody else.
Still a little hard to see if you can make it one more notch up, but that's a little better. Okay. We have it in front of us, so no worries.
Yeah, well, the only reason I say this, there are some, I just want to ask, are the, the red line items just are they substantive anyway, or just clarifying some of the language?
They're just clarification. That's all. I added a however, I said in, in recent years, we did this.
Great. I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into the nitty of that if it's not substantive.
Correct.
So I'm assuming everybody has read. I see at least one person with a bunch of notes. I don't know how thorough folks want to be through this, but let me start. Let me start online, either Commissioner Curry or Commissioner Murphy. Do either of you have? Well, let me ask this. We're gonna need a motion to what's the best way to phrase the motion for this, Allison? Or just approve?
I think, yeah, if there's concurrence from the commission on what's been drafted, you could make a motion to include this as an accessory to the main docket recommendations and then Dan, when we draft the letter that transmits the docket recommendations to council, this could be an attachment.
And yeah, an attachment. So why don't we do that, Carolyn? Do you want to make a motion to just include this as an attachment to the to the transmittal of the of the recommended docket?
I move that the letter which I submitted regarding the docket process be included as an attachment to the transmittal to the city council regarding the 2023 docket.
Great. And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Murphy. Great. Why don't I start? Well, because I feel like I'm ignoring the folks online a little bit. Commissioner Curry or Commissioner Murphy, do you have any comments to this comments, changes or thoughts?
I don't, I, I don't have those, but I, I will say that I have not seen this until just now. So I have the older version. And I've been looking in my email to see if I have some link to this document and I do not. Not the red line document.
I don't think the red lines are of any substance that go beyond the document that you would have already received.
Okay, I, it made it sound like there had been an update, it had been pushed out to everybody. I was just saying I did not get.
I received it just before the meeting started. I'd be happy to email it right now.
I wanted to make sure that that, yeah, no, that's fine. I'm just trying, actually, I'm trying to read it, actually. So we can scroll down just a little bit.
So I'll come back to you. Curry, Vice Chair Murphy, do you have any comments?
Yeah. I tend to agree with much of the analysis. Because as I, as I stated at the last session. There are a number of problems with the way the code is drafted and what our role is versus what the council's role is. And I think Carolyn has done a pretty good job of identifying those issues and, and pulling them together. I'm not sure what the right method is to present this to the council. Or whether it needs to go up now or whether we should spend a little more time refining it. I think a more refined and specific proposal might be more effective. And it's not something that needs to be docketed. So I think we can, as I think Allison pointed out last, last month. We can propose code changes at any time. So I think generally the ideas are good. I think the goal of clarifying our role is good. The analysis is good, but I think it needs to be refined and we should have a more specific proposal for the council to look at so that they're not left guessing, you know, what it is that we think we should do.
Okay. Victor, I see you at the end there looking, are you looking to?
Yes, sir. So I will echo Vice Chair Murphy's comments. I think this is a good document that highlights a lot of great issues. The thing that I found myself wondering as I read this was what is it exactly that we want the council to do? And I think we need to be very specific on kind of why we're sending this to the council and what exactly it is that we want them to do with this. So we've kind of highlighted the issues of code confusion. We've added some color around it, but as I look at it here, what is it specifically that we want them to do? And I, I think it would be given the, given the work that, that you've put in, I, I think it would be worthwhile to spend a little bit more time talking about that, thinking about it so that, so the effort is not wasted.
Okay.
And, and, and just to clarify, when I say put a little more effort in, I don't mean tonight.
I, I understood. Adam or Kate, any additional comments?
Just listening.
Just listening?
Yes.
So I'm hearing it. Oh, sorry. I thought you said, yes. I thought that was a yes. I'm, I'm ready to move on. Go ahead.
So I spent some time also after this meeting and I didn't know because we had not voted to docket an item to have council review this at the last meeting. I wasn't sure that something was going to come forward. I, I actually disagree with the analysis and I have some basis for that. I looked at the state code. It is a state code that mandates the docketting process. It has some specific items in it. If you look at the docketing processes for all of the surrounding cities, there's not a single one that has a separate set of criteria for a planning commission. And in fact, three of them say that the planning commission should use the same criteria as cities. Given this is a state law and it's implemented similarly in all of the surrounding communities, it strikes me as odd in analysis that we would say Mercer Island should be different and implement the state code differently than all of the other cities around us. I think the docketing process is intentionally limiting and I think the reason it is intentionally limiting is because if an item gets docketed, it has a very specific and expensive process, which is why they ask us to defer items that are proposed to the docket to existing work programs. And part and parcel of that is that each individual docketing item has to have its own SEPA process. And this was my problem with our discussion last time is that we were not considering the financial impact or the time impact on staff of this. And if there are, is a SEPA process happening for the residential development code and we move forward four items in the docket as individual items that are related to the residential development code, we now have five SEPA processes for the staff to do. And that just does not make sense to me if we're looking at good use of staff time. And I also disagree with the analysis that we don't have the info needed to make decisions and particularly the item about staff costs. So staff are directed by council and by the city manager to create budgets. They are the ones that know how much time they have. And if the staff are telling us they don't have time, I believe that they don't have time. And we have the city manager telling us that the staff don't have time to pick up additional things. So I think it's a little bit presumptuous for us as a commission to say that we know more about budgeting staff time than the city manager does. So I disagree with that part of the analysis as well. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. There's two ways to move forward. I think the question was brought up, do we have to, like, what's the way that we can do this? There's frankly, we can send a letter to the council anytime we want if we have a majority of the commission that so feels that that's necessary. So it does not have to go with the transmittal with the rest of the docket. So we have two choices. We can sit here and try to you know, we can take a vote on what's been proposed, either propose any changes and try to move it forward. Or I could take a motion to table the discussion around this and allow the opportunity for a little additional work to be done that we can take the time to discuss it further. Or the third would be to there's always the, and I think we've done this before, Allison, there's, there's always the the ability for individuals either individually or as a subgroup to submit a minority report to the to the council. It would not be ratified or sanctioned by the entire commission, but so those are the three options. I'm not advocating for one over and over another. I'm just trying to lay out what the procedural options are. So one is to continue forward, take a vote, make changes. Number two would be to have someone propose or move to table the discussion to a time in the future. Or the third would be to withdraw the motion and submit it as a minority report to the council separately. Did I miss anything, Allison? Sorry. And then I'll get to your question.
That, that sounds accurate.
Okay.
I guess I don't, I don't quite understand what the option. So I've made a motion to include a letter with a transmittal and it's seconded. And you're saying we could vote to
Either yes or no.
Yes or no on that?
On that.
Okay. And then what's the next option?
The next option is someone could say, I would like to table discussion of this to a, a meeting in the future, which basically then sort of the motion is still on the table. It has just been put under the table.
So within that possibility, is, is, is it possible that I can take these general ideas and put them more into some of this, this sort of list of what we are suggesting that the council do?
Yes, you could come back with suggested revisions should you wish.
Okay, so I, I guess I hear two options then. One is vote yes or no on this, or the other is table it and discuss it in the future and perhaps.
And the third option would be you could withdraw your motion and come back at the next meeting and make another motion.
Oh, okay. All right.
Which might be the simpler option, but.
Wait for a vote then.
So how would?
I guess I would just.
I think Vice Chair Murphy's got a question. Oh, my apologies.
Well, no, I was, I was going to make a motion to table it. But if I think we need to address the original motion from Carolyn if she wants to pursue it.
Well, can tabling it be an amendment to the motion or?
Well, tabling it would just mean that we would stop talking about it now and you would have the opportunity to come back at a future meeting and say, hey, we've done some extra work. The team can go and look at look at this in more detail and suggest changes at a future meeting.
So we can consider that without taking a vote then, right?
Yeah, exactly. Oh, yeah, yeah. To, if, if Commissioner Murphy suggests that we table it and I get a second and four votes, then I'll say, great, we're not gonna talk about it anymore and we'll bring it back to the next meeting.
Second.
Second.
All right.
I would like to ask Allison one question while we're, we're on this thing. Is it part of the discussion? Okay, here?
Um, yeah, if you have a so technically, I don't think Mike made the motion to table. So go ahead. Yes.
You have another motion.
You have a motion on the table. So if you have a question related to that.
I have a question related to that. So, you know, when I wrote these concerns down, I wrote them with the idea in mind that we have done this. I've seen how this has been done in the past. We've kind of sort of letting the council know about a concern. And then my thought was that if the council is moved by this and is also concerned, they would ask the staff to look into this and come back with some suggestions for how to address it. So I thought, you know, while I respect the, you know, request for specifics from Victor and from, you know, Michael Murphy. I felt that that kind of detail was something that the staff would be asked to do by the council if the council so wishes. So I mean, I, I would favor just going forward with it and sharing the concerns and, and, and let the council and staff take care of it. So that would be my preference, but Allison, does that sound like how the council, you know, deals with these types of suggestions?
Um, I don't think there's really a set process for how they deal with these types of suggestions because this happens rarely. So, you know, I think if this goes along with the docket and is submitted, they'll certainly review it. I don't know how they'll respond.
Okay, I didn't mean it to be a docket item, although there is one aspect of this that is a docket item.
I, I should, I should clarify. This will, there's always a letter that gets attached to, it's a memo that staff writes and that I sign as the chair that says, here's the background, here's the history. It's usually like two statements around what the decision is. We all see the staff memos here that we get. This would be attached as a letter, like an attachment to that letter. It would not be a part of the docket.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And I think it would be difficult for us as a commission to make specific suggestions to the council as to how these matters should be dealt with. I mean, that's basically what you have to figure out when you look into it. So I mean, I, I, if, if you want to table it, I will certainly make my best efforts to list what some of those things might be, but just some, some concerns there.
Kate?
Okay.
Yeah, I agree that we don't want to be overly specific and I agree that there's an issue with the code and that it doesn't address how the planning commission is supposed to evaluate docket items. I'd be happy with a two sentence letter that said the code doesn't specify whether we should use the same evaluation tools as you. To me, this is too prescriptive. And, and because I don't agree with some of the analysis, it bothers me that it's so prescriptive. I, but I would be supportive of saying there's some confusion about the code and, and keeping it very neutral. As opposed to making a suggestion that we have our own criteria.
So having heard everything, I guess I probably feel like it would be best to go along with tabling and I will come back with something more specific. So.
Okay.
All right.
So this, I'll go Commissioner Curry and then Commissioner Murphy. I see you both have hands.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I think the analysis is great. I think in, in I think to provide a little bit of our own self-service and taking a page out of Kate's Money Saving Guide that you know, suggesting suggesting edits and then just having somebody say yay or nay might be a way to help save a little bit of money, but also show that we're properly engaged as well, right? Instead of just kind of tossing a problem over the fence and expecting somebody else to figure it out. Right. I think that if we can apply some, you know, table it, come back with proposed changes to the best of our ability with what we understand the code to be now and how we might be able to apply a little bit more clarity to it, I think goes a little bit further as if we were to push this forward. So.
Great. Commissioner Murphy?
Is it now my chance to make a motion to table this?
Yes.
Okay, so moved.
Is there a second to table?
Back in.
Uh, it's been moved by, uh, Commissioner Murphy and seconded by Commissioner Curry. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of, uh, tabling discussion, uh, please, uh, do you need a roll call, Deb, or can I just do a voice vote? All right, uh, all those in favor, thumbs up, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, all opposed? Uh, hearing none, we'll table discussion. And we'll work with, I, I don't want to prescribe the date, but, um, we'll work with you, Allison, on bringing this back. Okay, hopefully this last one is gonna go quickly, uh, related to number five. Um, update to the Planning Commission bylaws related to, uh, addition of language uh, aligning the ethics and conflict of interest provisions, uh, with the city code. Um, Allison, do you quickly want to move us through this?
Yeah, I'm struggling with my multiple screens to actually find the revision, but, um, just the history on this is back in June when we reviewed the bylaws. Uh, Vice Chair Murphy proposed a change to the section about conflict of interest that essentially refers to the city code ethics provisions, um, and dictates that those will govern any potential conflicts. And the commission recommended this change in June. It was subsequently reviewed by the city attorney. He concurred that this was an acceptable change. And so now we just need the commission to vote to approve the change.
Okay, uh, with that, is there a motion to approve the change as presented?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change as presented.
Thank you. It's been, uh, uh, moved by Commissioner Accuse. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I will give it to Commissioner, uh, second to Commissioner Murphy, because he had his microphone on. It has been moved and seconded. I know we've discussed this in the past. Does anybody have any additional commentary on this change to the bylaws? Okay, hearing none. Um, all those in favor, please raise your thumb and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, uh, the motion passes seven to zero. It's the quickest bylaws change I've ever seen, uh, Allison.
It was very fast. Excellent.
Well, at least we did our homework earlier, so. Yeah. Um, okay, thank you very much for that, uh, all that, uh, conversation this evening. Last couple of things, Deputy Directors Report. Allison, do you have anything for us?
Given the late hour, I really don't. I just want to remind everyone, our next meeting is December 14th.
All right, um, are there any, uh, well, if you have a planned absence or I think we already went through this to determine this date with the little survey poll, so hopefully everyone's gonna be able to be available and we'll have a quorum. Uh, so with that, uh, thank you very much. And is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing. You got five things, Victor? Such a comedian. I love this guy. All right, hearing none. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.
Good. Bye now.